Unified School District School Board, I am calling meeting to letter at 9:30 AM. To access translation and zoom, please click on the little icon at the bottom of the screen. And if you're here. We're going to begin the public comment agenda item, members of the public are invited to speak to the board and then that is not otherwise on the agenda. But it's within the subject matter of the district of those who have school districts. Please turn now for public. If you're participating, we assume, please for you to kind of assume that I'm tired to the beginning of the item on the agenda. And if you're participating by phone, by sorry, after we're pretty casual this morning, so we'll just alternate between in person and online. The time allotted for speakers is two minutes and in the meantime, we'll leave it on the rest of our agenda. And in the event we have more, I don't see a lot of public comment, but it generally lasts one hour, I think, just for that. Okay, so that's called order. If you're angry, but allegiance, if you are able or willing, please rise.
Erica. More. Well.
First. I put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic which stands in one nation, under God, individual, with their hands as a circle. Eighty-four land, lady of the body, worship. We recognize that you're the best young lands of the Chinatown, the local, the local, and if I was them, it's the first inhabitants of the land that we have laid out. Labor of the bodies, recognition of the nature. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls on the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember the black and brown people born and died working this land against their little regeneration. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today. Of all immigrants, labor, including voluntary and voluntary traffic force, and the boundary peoples in the building of what we refer to in the US in the next six. Author, doctor, for shall not be done. A fun role call superintendent Cotton, could you please take role?
Um, trustee Francis.
Here.
Trustee, the top of the table. Just in simple.
My fault here.
Where are we coming from?
I'm down here. And.
All board members on the floor, thank you. We are up to a six WCCU's the public comment. Is there any public comment? Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I know almost everybody in the room and almost everybody knows me, I've been around for a long time. I would like to say that the most important role, and I don't know that will come out of today's meeting. But with the new superintendent, the new school year, fairly new school board that has found its chemistry now. I'm quite optimistic. That things are going to improve. I've been part of sixty-year journey with this district. And I picked this district and I picked my town because of what it offered sixty years ago. And I've seen a continual erosion of those things. Good intentioned people and made decisions. But things have slipped away. And because of this erosion, there are a lot of people who have given up. And they would like to be helpful. And if you could go to the two retired educators groups, you could go to the faith community. I'm saying go to them, don't ask them to come to you because they have given up, they need to be revitalized. The business community, city government, they all think that, oh, that's Ms. Cotton's business now. She's going to take care of everything. The successes that we've had in the past as a teacher of broke it, special ed, regular ed, all the successes that we've had have been because of partnerships, for guest speakers, for internships, for jobs. I'm working with a bunch of my former students now on the archive of Kennedy. People who are in their seventies now have such good thought about what was there. They want to not parade around and say how good it was, they want to say how good it can be. And there are many, many people who want to work with you, there's local pastors and rabbis and publishers and NPR reporters and doctors, they're, they are eagles, they want to fight back, they want to be helpful. I think I said all I need to say, but in private, I would have a lot more to say. And thank you for your opportunity. And for eagle, that was one of my.
Nice, that's Auburn University, that's my name. Congratulations. More eagle, thank you.
Eagle scout, I've had a lot of eagles in.
I was eagle too. Nice.
Uh, is there any public comments online?
There is no public.
Thank you to all the public comment. Move on now to a seven agenda review and adoption, is there any adjustments from the board?
I do like to understand the agenda a little bit better before we leave it. Because I want to make sure we're in agreement with what we're going to discuss. Um, and so I'd like if it's okay, if we're pretty good. So if you want us through the agenda, I don't know what this really entails, is that okay?
Yes. It is a good beginning workshop. As I had mentioned when we spoke on the phone, by the way, thank you so much for having the phone call with me. What it is is it gives you look at the culture that you have currently. Put some highlights on what you can celebrate as a history. There'll be many activities, you'll sit on paper around the room, I'm not going to sit here and lecture. We'll work together, have conversations and discussions we need to have. Create a positive collaborative culture. You also take an inventory and a working styles inventory to understand each other's working style. So you can work more effectively together. There is a segment on goal, understanding your goal areas, focus areas, what will you focus on this coming year, coming in here. Um, there is a section on expectations, what does the board expect from the superintendent, what does the superintendent expect from the board? And creating that channel of communication so you can all communicate more effectively.
And then for the goal setting, could you go a little more detailed about that, Erica, are we going to?
It's up to you, it's up to the six of you to work on what should be your priority areas moving forward. You don't set goals based on the desires of each individual board. The goals that you'll talk about and you will establish are aligned to your L cap goals, they're aligned to any, any other goals you may already have. So you will go, history goal, and they're usually goal areas that are very specific for, for all districts, student achievement. Right, financial stability, culture, I mean, those are three main areas, so you'll, you'll talk about that.
Yeah, and as for to lead today, knowing the goals for the district.
Having communicating those with your superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have a.
Thanks, we didn't have a chance to connect, so I think that was part of the problem.
And this entire retreat is open session. It's all.
So for a seven agenda review and adoption, are we coming to accept this? Yeah. We will have a government conversation.
Before we start, if you have a point of order, are we sure that we can be heard? Have we checked it? Because we don't have an app, so, or I don't see an app, the map. There it is, never mind, it's blended in with the wall, okay, so we can be heard online from that far away?
You should. You can check with Otilia, make sure, so she's on.
Sorry, just because of open session, I'm going to make sure that we're heard online.
She said yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, thank you so much, thank you for the education, we want to all of you, again, thank you for the phone call. Really gave me more information, you were able to have questions, I really appreciate it. Before they begin, I do want your permission to do first names, as I do in these type of workshops, are you all personally present?
Yeah.
Is everyone comfortable? It's less of that formal, the three sessions are really more conversations that you all need to have as a governance team on how you're going to move forward and move your district forward, so. With that, the very first thing I'd like you to do, take a look at your folder, you have your agenda, you have a number of documents in there. I will refer you to the folder and I will let you know what you'll be working on with. We already talked about agenda, this is your workshop on facilitating your conversation, so it's really important that you're open, you're honest, you're transparent, and you're kind, so the tone of kindness is really important when we have a conversation with us. Um, the very first activity I'd like you to take a look at and to individually, individual reflections, there is a page, I believe, is behind your agenda. And it is meeting guidelines. It's a set of, I believe, seventeen guidelines. And if you can go ahead and number that, I don't hold you as you're not numbered, but there are seventeen of them. Go ahead and number the one to seventeen, please. Sixty minutes. Four minutes or so. And select your talk to meeting guidelines that is important as you conduct your meetings. For your talk to. So we don't have extra copies of of the packet or any book for that, is there any way to make something? But I mean, you can have anything that I hand out, should be available as well.
We should also upload it to the agenda.
Absolutely, yeah. Anything that you are receiving today can be copied and shared, there was something that I shared with you prior to this, so it's okay. For your talk to meeting guidelines. Third one then. And also, please put your, you don't need your electronics, I'm not going to refer you to anything that you'll need your electronics, phones as well.
I have a eleven-month-old, I'm not very much.
Sure.
Also have work, so I'm taking that off, so I got to be on the line.
At some point, it's up to you having the conversation about usage of electronics. Yes, that's something that, and I'll talk about that. But for this session, as far as I'm concerned, you don't need any of those, any of the talk. All right. So you're going to go around, I'd like you to share what you selected, but only share your number one, please. So your first choice, and lastly, may I start with you, that'd be okay, your first meeting guideline that you feel is really important as you.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Come back.
Okay. All right.
You said just the number one?
It's okay, don't worry.
So tell me the number and then read it out, please.
Okay, so my number one is number one, we'll keep our focus on the best interest of our students.
Beautiful, thank you, Jamila?
Number sixteen, we will work to make sure that there are no hidden agendas and that all issues and concerns can be dealt with openly by all members.
Wonderful, thank you, Dimitri?
Um, so I also had number one, so I'll say number is my second one, which is number seventeen, we will work towards the future, learning from the past.
All right, and you had also number one, don't I?
Yeah.
For the check one.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
I have number sixteen, but I can say my second one, which is number fifteen. Well, we have a difference of opinion, we will debate the fact of the situation and avoid personalities, we will address process, not personalities.
All right, chill.
Um, well, by the stem, number one is to keep our focus on the best interest of our students, and number seventeen will work towards the future. Where are you?
Thank you. That's the idea.
Okay, I'm ready then.
Okay.
Uh, so for me, it's number ten, all two members were all for their ideas and resources, and number eleven, we will go on the idea of the leadership model. Paraphrase, paraphrase, I'm saying.
Thank you, now I'm going to go around, if you didn't share your second one, you can't. Was a little, I think you had a second one you didn't share yet, right?
I didn't, but it was already shared out, it had.
Which one was it?
Number seventeen, we will work towards the future, learning from the past.
Thank you, Jamila?
My second was number nine, we will get helpful feedback directly and openly.
And you already shared your second, okay. All right. And same day you already.
I did, yeah.
But, okay, so you have seven, right, did I count that right, you have seven meeting guidelines moving forward. My suggestion is, since you took the time, you chose this because they mean something to you, right? So Jamila, why did, why did you choose the ones that you chose?
Uh, I think that what happens in this district is we put makeup on the mirror and think our face is going to change.
That's why I just, we've got to put it all on the table, be honest, open, and just get through it, I don't think we have the hard conversation.
And those hard conversations are really critical.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's how you get any vote, that. But, but you need to have, this actually leads me to study I want to share with you, and that is a study done by Google about Google, uh, Project Aristotle. You may be familiar with it, so back in twenty twelve, like, we just wanted to, well, we even hired a team of researchers and psychologists to figure out what are the key elements of highly high functioning, what do they have in common? Right, so to Jamila's point, psychological safety is number one. We feel safe, right? And, and I believe, what I heard some of you had selected for your meeting guidelines is the ability and the importance of having open, honest, transparent conversation, having those hard conversations, they're not easy. That's why you're called hard, right? Until you're able to have that, in the psychological state environment, you're not going to get the work done that, that you like to get done. Number three, dependability, right, these are the five key elements of highly functioning. Can we depend on each other to do our work on time and accurately? So when you think of this, what is your work, what's the work of the board?
Subdirection.
And you share a responsibility. Specific to your meeting, to your board meeting, what is your role? When you have your packet for your board meeting, what happens?
We have the agenda. We should get from the agenda, if we have an agenda, we should.
At the meeting?
At the meeting.
So prior to the meeting, there's work that you do, there are a lot of work, and that's, I, I, I'm a former board member, so I know what it's like to get those big packets, and at the beginning of being appointed to the board, I was not familiar, because I didn't come from K to twelve, I didn't have K to twelve background, I had higher education background, so for me, it took more time to go through the packet, write down the questions I had, and at the beginning, I didn't even know what question to ask. But being prepared means asking the questions, having the knowledge you need to have, no surprises for the superintendent, for the cabinet, and voiceover, right, it's a two-way relationship. And being able to ask the questions you need to get the information you need, so you can make the right decision. All in all, you chose, those of you who chose number one, the focus on student success and achievement, that ultimately why you're here. Right, it's a protection of public education and educating your student. The third element, structure and clarity, who does what? Right, there is a distinct role of the board, the staff, and the superintendent. Because if everybody does everyone else's job, that's not a healthy functioning environment, right? You step on the lot of toes and you make decisions that are not in your role. Number four of the key elements, meaning of work. So high functioning, high functioning teams have an understanding of their work. Your work in, in education educating students, leaders of tomorrow, and the fifth one, impact of work. Work that's impactful. You are directly impacting your students and their families and your community. Right, by the decisions that you make, by how you work together, the conversations you have, do you always have to agree on everything? Awesome. I mean, it's not realistic, you all come from different backgrounds, different belief systems, different views and perspectives, but when you're here together, the mission and the focus is you then. And so the ability to have those hard conversations without making it personal or taking it personal is very important. But having the questions, asking the questions you need to ask. So what I suggest is, do you currently have meeting guidelines? You do. Um, how different are these from the current ones that you have? And was everyone included in creating? The minimum that's okay. I didn't know we had meeting guidelines.
So there's a governance manual that was created, but, um. Well, we're doing this. Do you?
We should.
Out, out lives. Purple, beautiful. That was one. Which don't get everything, everyone, that's where we're going, I mean, we haven't just done a couple of years, and so maybe starting it can be updated before feedback.
Definitely, I think anytime you have a new board member, even one new board member, you have a brand new board, and all these conversations, and I think when everyone needs to agree to it, so it would be a good idea to do a governance, to do a handbook, just review it, not a lot by chance, but then you can look at the guidelines. Guidelines, say, for then, for in your head.
So it's like another retreat.
Governance, yeah, okay. And the handbook is, is a living document, it does get, um, it does get revised, reviewed and revised, especially when you have a given one. And those are your agreements, your protocols, how do you visit both sides, how do you respond to community concern, how we communicate. Uh, those protocols are really critical for all of the targets and areas, as well as your meeting guideline. So one of the, uh, one suggestion is to have your meeting guidelines at the beginning of each meeting to maybe take a turn and read one, maybe have it posted in your boardroom. Um, so then your public, your community also understands that you have meeting norms and meeting guidelines, and it helps guide your conversations. Again, that's up to you, that's something that you want to do, but if you chose them, obviously they're meaningful to you. Let them set the tone for your other setup.
And I think the garrote is a little wrong, so I don't know about reading them.
Or the ones that you have now?
Yeah, but, yeah.
Well, I'm talking about the ones that I did today.
Oh, this one, sorry, I see.
And again, but you, but having it visible, letting the community know that you are having these open, honest conversations, that you talk about how you're going to work together, that's really important, like, not just the work, but how you'll get there and how you'll work together. So what I'd like you to do next is you're going to, you're not going to sit for too long at these sessions, you'll get to move around, write on chart paper, have conversations you need to have, it's not a lecture, right, that's not your lecture. What I'd like you to do is to think about what you are proud of in your district. What are you proud of, what makes your district unique? You're going to gather right around this chart paper here on the door, and you're going to write bullet points, what are you proud of, what makes you unique and special? And I would like each of you to participate and to share what you're proud of and have a conversation about that. And, um, for any of the chart work that you do, if I can ask one of you to volunteer and, and chart as your colleagues are sharing. What they'll do at the end is I'll take pictures of all your work, and I'll send you a memo that summarizes your conversation, but if you don't think that if you don't have that time, but if you don't, you'll have that memo, that's a summary of your class. Okay, so come on over. Right here, you'll also get some stats, you need to care about that, right? And the markers are right there, and you can use, you can use color, you can't, color, make it color. Any chart, this one right here, and so, and the title of it, which you're. Are you most proud of?
I'm glad it was still.
This one, so, again, bullet points doesn't have to be anything super long, right? All right, okay.
Is everybody writing individually, or you?
I suggest one handwriting, so then it's easier also. All right. What are you proud of?
Are they going to see?
That word.
That person. All right, somebody may have to touch phone, I haven't, I haven't been so long.
We'll chat to the beginning.
Many firsts. Well, many firsts, many.
Legacy of treasures.
Legacy or.
Nobody. I got it, I'm ready.
Talk to me about the legacy of treasures.
He's talking about it. He's coming up. I've been doing listening sessions lately. And each one asking who attended school in this district, who's from this district. There's a lot of amazing people that's from the community. Um and I I I I see in the media oftentimes there's a lot of negative about schools.
I was supposed to go up to the wood, but. It's okay.
Is there any that sounded even like?
I mean, I think there's secondary programs of halfights. And I think that leads to a lot of.
Okay.
Uh we are loyal to a fault.
Is that something you're proud of?
Yes.
Talk to me about that.
Well, guys, uh I think to Dr. Cotton's point, when you hear you say, we, there are a group of. Really dogged individuals that stay in the district sixty years, thirty years, send their kids here, their grandkids here, they bring loyalty. To a fault, even though we are sometimes running on fumes and Jesus. You can still find those people who say, I choose W C C to achieve. So we're loyal to a fault, that's a positive.
Extremely pro education community. They're they're not loyal here, but they're committed. I think we have so many. Great things that we could go from from community members and they're invested and I think we do it out.
And I have one more thing. I just wanted to say like staff in general, like I know there's outliers, but I think that people can choose to be here long term. They have, they have made a commitment because they can make thirty, fifty thousand dollars more driving ten minutes away. Right? And they choose to stay because our kids. And I think that that is a strength of.
It's committed to please.
Committed to please commit.
Why did you take a look? That is beautiful. Thank you so much.
Say you said we don't know the university, we don't know the board.
Alright, so you can take a look. You have so much to be proud of in this district. And he can, everyone with them, you're proud of, those we got to you. Make a right decision, so forward to create opportunities for them. Alright, now I want you to move on and stop working on and start thinking about what you want to accomplish as a governance. I hope you're. What do you hope to accomplish? What will be your legacy? So come on over to this chart here.
How how micro do you want us to get?
So, well. Then you start um sharing on live email.
Okay.
But also think like, you're here for. You're here for limited.
And that's the right time, right?
I'm here for limited time, in reality, right? What do you hope to accomplish as a team? This team right here. When you give the needle call, moving the needle forward.
Don't you have?
Uh with this, uh improving.
Our communication with our stakeholders and among ourselves.
The communication in general.
Yeah.
Internally, externally.
What's number three?
Uh creating the. Foundation. For anti-racism.
And you have a timeline or a timeframe? Is it this year?
And so it's for your team, this governance team. And I know you all have different uh. Different uh times that you're here, right? It's like, who is, who is up this year? Is anyone up for reelection this year? Twenty twenty six is the next one. Okay, so.
It sounds like expanding our D L I international.
Oh, for sure, right? Yeah.
Yeah, sure, yes.
But but some of these, if you can think about it. Some of this doesn't necessarily change because you have a new governance team. Right? When the focus is on students, achievement for students, they'll be similar, right? The next governance team, when when you do this faculty, it'll be similar. None of this is also short term. That's what happened this year. Right? You have to begin to work overseas when you like this. When you start talking about goal to. Alright, I'm ready.
Implement successful elementary newcomer.
Establish.
Those words.
You said programs.
What did you say?
Return to collaborative relationship with labor.
Y'all did.
Alright, anything else?
I'd like to see a more fleshed out strategic plan.
When you do, do your strategic plan last?
Oh, within a couple of years.
Thank you. And everyone shared, right?
Yeah.
Alright, any of these that you would like to to talk about?
Any highlight?
Yeah. Now here is. Uh here's the thing. And we'll talk about it more when we get to the goal. But if everything gets a priority work and nothing is. Right? So when we get to the goal setting, begin thinking about what is. Priority for this next year, the next couple of years, keeping in mind that goals keep trying to act. These three to five years. So you set goal, you work with your superintendent. He doesn't have a magic wand, nothing's gonna happen immediately. But you start to take steps towards those goals. But anything here that you feel is really, really critical. Go ahead, I think.
Um so one that is like really important to me, just, I mean, they're all great, they're all important, they're number eight for me. And learning is successful, I'm not training for my programs, just because I've been advocating since I got on the board for that for five years. And it has not happened. So to me, and I, to me, it also connects to number one, removing the needle. On expanding the international program, like, to me, that's connected to this. And unfortunately, our English language learner, our new comments, are lowest performing students in the district. Data that we saw. And to me, it's because that's about it, right? Like I'm getting in commerce district. They just get sent to an environment where they're not going to be successful because the teacher doesn't know their language. Teacher might not know or have the tools to support them. And and to me, that's just one more student that is just fall fast. So I, for me, especially thinking that I have one last year on board. Potential, um I would, I would like to see that finally implemented or at least the beginning of it.
I'd like to understand, let's move beyond paychecks a little better.
Now, what do you want to talk about?
Uh just I'm not really, I'm just not really sure what it means, so maybe just a little.
I think that, I think in this district that there, they suck out of this district that they don't invest past their paycheck. So they don't, they don't uh push themselves past the standard of receiving a check. And I think that we as a board need to set a standard that goes beyond that. In this district, where we are and where we want to go to move with you, you gotta invest past that paycheck.
So setting standard, holding people accountable, right? So having a structure for that.
I think for me, number three is the umbrella that I can put all of these under. For me, I think that creating foundational anti-racism deals with moving the needle forward. Because if kids feel safe, seen and heard, they want to be at our schools. If they're at our schools, they're gonna impact that learning and they're gonna move the needle forward. I think creating a foundation for anti-racism will help with our physical. Help with our staff and the people who want to stay here, because they feel protected. I think that our D L I and our our uh youth summer program all go under the foundation of. Anti-racism and seeing our students also think that when we want to get rid of zip codes, policies, practices and procedures. We do as a person looking at a lens of how it's only impacted, affected and supported small numbers of classes in the district. Um that's me. So that's why I put in the three on it.
And then five, I would say number five, because we have to improve the communication. Our communities, our stakeholders, students, everyone don't trust the district. They lost the trust in the district, so we have to improve that communication. And internally, I just feel like we don't communicate that all. We know things when things. Hmm, okay. And we'll talk about that, the communication, you know, protocol. But that's important and that's how you make your decision, when you have proper information, right? And how that information is communicated is very pretty important. You really said something that that's really important and that. Students might be afraid, seen, something. And I would like to expand on that and say for everyone in your district. Your teachers, your staff, you feel safe, seen and heard. That's how you walk towards a culture that's positively collaborative. That's very much needed. It goes back to the idea of psychological faith, we like to say, right? To to share my opinion, we share my feedback, to ask a question. Think about what happens in the classroom. When you don't feel safe, you're not going to raise your hand. You sit in the back and kind of. Alright.
I think for me is um. One of the things is number eleven, because I think that we reflect a lot, like the strategic plan. And those are the things that I think we also need to focus on matches, you know, the things we've changed, you know, perspective of. But actually, the systems and accountability part, because I think that when you're referencing things, but they're not attached to anything. We could say, you know, the strategic plan, so what does that really mean and what things are we tying to the strategic plan? The governance, you know, stuff, right? What things are we choosing to tie into that? So I think really having this of the place. So then to be able to hold that accountability aspect, I think that's really important um for everything. And that ties in, you know, everything, I think, just really ensuring that us as a governance team are able to hold that accountability and that oversight. Because there's systems that we are now holding accountable and there's people now being held accountable for.
That's that's alignment, right? You need to have alignment among all of your processes, procedures, your study direction documents. Your mission, vision, core values, strategic plan, L C A. You're all aligned. Your board bill, superintendent goal, there needs to be alignment. And I think having those, like I said, those deeper conversations of how we're aligning them, because I think, you know, we throw out like these. Things all the time, like all this aligns with, you know, the strategic plan or we're gonna align this, but you know, we're just assuming. That everyone knows what that alignment looks like and we're not actually having a conversation of this is the way I'm looking at things. And this is the way it's actually aligning, so that we're all on the same.
And then can I ask you a housekeeping question? When you come to the end of each goal, will you let me know so I can call for a public comment?
Each like each section.
Yeah, like you're done with goal one, so I could say, okay, is there public content on the section?
Thank you.
Because otherwise I'll.
Well, this was a great discussion. You have a lot of work ahead of you, right? You begin talking about what you like to see here, but it doesn't magically happen. A lot of work is going to go into it, a lot of communication. But then honest communication, right? That's that's how you get anything up. The other thing is, you set the tone for your district. You set the tone for your. Um you'll get up again soon. You set the tone for what leadership, what high functioning teams and what leadership, true leadership looks like. So how you behave, how you talk to each other, how you treat each other, people are watching and listening. Your teachers, to the students, the families, and so the mannerism, so so critical. And and what I'd like you to also take in. And, and what I like you to also take into consideration is that communication is not just work. It's ninety-three percent spoken word. Is, I think it's something like fifty, sixty, seventy-seven percent body language and thirty-seven or thirty-eight percent, uh, tone of voice. So keep that in mind, because there is a way to disagree. I, always and always, uh, respect that end decision, right?
Uh, just to let folks know that there's a power outage across the district. And so there's about five thousand lights, about that is impacting, um, like for our sites over there. And building our headwork down there, which will.
So it's centralized in Richmond?
Yeah. Yes.
So do you need to do anything?
Um, no, Melissa's on it, so I may be texting.
Okay.
Um, so that's all involved, so.
Which is?
This old Lincoln nutrition.
Nutrition.
Is that gonna be okay with you?
Can you tell me the downtown, our, the district office, nutrition, Lincoln, because it's right by the district office, and Greenwood? And has the timer started? Like if it's out for two hours, we have to make a plan?
We, we need to make a plan.
Yeah.
Don't wanna see it closed, so it's in tone, so.
Okay, well, we just do what we need to do. Can you tell me your first name again?
It's Sepeh, but I did what?
Step, Step, Sepeh. Se, uh, Ms. Sepeh, do you have a built-in potty breaks or are we on our own?
No, well, I asked you that, you're not on your own. Well, definitely so. Need it, but if you need, sometimes spelling, seeing the name helps. Um. Let's see, what time is it now? Ten twenty-four, so eleven, is eleven okay? Take a little ten minute. Uh, and if I forget Jamila, you can let.
Don't worry, I'll remind you.
It's time for, um, for a break.
Alright, do you prefer Sepeh or Sepeh?
Um, Sepeh is fine.
So you're sure?
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very sure, it's, it's easier to remember too. Alright, so with that, we just, what we just saw is a, a, a good example of you can be, you have your plan. You have your plan and something happened, just like COVID did, just like any power outage, fires, storms. So for all of you to be unified, not uniform, but unified with your message, with your mission. Because you're all here for the right reason. When we spoke on the phone, there was no one who said, I'm running for this office or that office, or we did not run, we had one agenda, uh, in mind. You're here because you care about your community, you care about your students. Now joining forces and really coming together support. What I'd like you to do next, this is the next segment, which is the working style.
Okay, so the forum we've been doing to, is there any public comments on goal one?
There is no public comment online.
Well, true, great.
So working style is a, is an instrument that was designed for governance team members. It helps you identify your working style, how you work. What's important about it is that it also shows you what your colleagues' working styles are and how you can work together. It's two pages stapled together. It's called governance team working style. I believe it's on the left-hand side, it's on the left, but it's on the right-hand side. So if you can take that out, there are five sections, okay? Each section has five possible statements. What you do and listen to this part carefully, because sometimes, uh, governance team members don't do this correctly. You're going to read each segment and you're going to give it a number between one and one. One is most like you. Five to least like you. Each section should have one number between one and five, not to repeat another. Okay? So you give each segment a, a number and then you move on to the next. When you're done with all five sections, we turn the page, there is a grid. You'll go ahead and move your numbers, or have you done this before, Jamila? Yeah. You, uh, transfer your numbers to the grid, you'll have five numbers when you move all your, all your numbers completely. Five columns, five numbers. So go ahead and, and respond.
Um, so now, because I just have to understand.
You have, okay, so you do, so you only have that working style, okay? Alright. See though.
Well, if you have pictures of you and you can just write down the person.
You are always in a mood, which is like not a comfortable decision, right? I'm fine. Thank you for being with you.
Oh, that's the lowest, yeah. Two. Your time, well, this is a personal. We invite you to make contact, so that's why. And the second, second list. And for you to make those would be all in.
What was your best?
A relationship.
What was your lowest?
Hello. Sorry, getting highest of us.
I mean, you're going. You have to put your lowest.
Data driven. Yeah.
I don't need to add about data driven.
Okay.
Your lowest was data driven?
No, my highest was.
Okay, that's what I thought, I was like, really?
Yeah, I know.
I thought you were data driven.
Remember that the lowest is your primary style, primary working style.
The lowest is your primary working style?
It's your primary working style, so if you number it in, one, most like you. Five, least like you. That is very.
That's not shocking, but then.
The lowest means your primary.
The lowest is your primary working style.
Second lowest is your secondary, so you're, yeah, that is driven, right?
I am not data driven, but that is amazing to me, but, you know, yeah.
But you know what, in this setting though?
I probably am.
You do, uh.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably true, and like.
Well, that, that's the way, you make your decisions, you need data.
Yeah, that's absolutely, okay, that's shocking, but the way you explained it is better, because I would think. As a history teacher, that I'd be a historian, but.
And our personal relationships and our relationships.
And historian.
But when it comes to spaces.
Yeah.
Like I tend to be like, oh, we need to get this done, like, and sometimes I care about.
Yeah. That's very, that's very interesting. Working style versus style of being, is it not? Okay, what's your, what's yours?
Mine, data driven and a relationship.
Yeah.
So whatever you found out.
So what's your lowest?
Your lowest.
My lowest number, relationship. Your lowest total. No, your lowest total number is data driven too. And then your next lowest number is relationship.
Oh, interesting, yeah.
So we're all date.
We're just.
I'm trying to figure it out, please.
What's your lowest?
What's your lowest?
So this is really interesting.
Then we all do it wrong.
No, I think we did it right when she explained it, let's say.
So my lowest, my highest is data driven, that's the, what, um.
What's your lowest?
My lowest is bottom line.
So that's your primary working style.
But if you think by like in governance, you wanna like check things off, right? You wanna get things done, it makes sense.
What's your second lowest?
Relationship.
So again, circle your lowest and your second lowest. You have two pieces of posted, make sure your name is on each one.
Oh, my second lowest, I'm sorry, fish in there. Maybe like in my.
So you're, so you're.
My lowest, oh, right, relationship. No, no, no.
Your totals.
My totals. What, most, most times, bottom line.
Other than.
The lead point.
The.
Uh, the least points, then you're, then you're data driven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody in here is data driven.
That's.
And then we all have like relationships.
Well, you have relationships, Guadalupe has relationships, me and Black Heart over here, we have.
Bottom line, fish in area, historian.
General container.
So interesting, because like the historian part, I think it's really important.
Not only he knew you're putting. Y'all threw me off, I thought it was you guys. I think that the difference is, the way I was looking at it, I was looking at it not in this setting, because in this setting, I think that we're, to the natural's point, we're relationship people and historian people and visionary people, but when we have to make a decision, I guess, I guess it is, we're bottom line and.
Basically, some of like was the majority, right?
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Essentials.
And you do rely on data.
Yeah.
I mean, you know. No, so you're circling your lowest number, lowest total, that's your primary working style. And the second lowest is your secondary working style, so you should have two of your lowest numbers.
Okay.
Okay, and then what's your secondary? Okay, so you can circle, so your posted note on here on your name, and then category and the number.
Like for the, so far, I've picked everything the same.
Okay, one more.
Sorry.
Your name.
One, one action.
Name on each one? You know, uh, your diverse, your lowest, which was data driven, right?
Relationships is really important.
So let's see, your name on each one, please?
Always have to care about it. Okay, so am I doing?
Your name on each one.
I think that's the thing that you can't even work, if work on then, how, like, you always do with part and the category.
Can you say, well, I didn't know the main point?
No, then the one we talked about, so you know how you have four, by one, by one, what's the lowest, uh-huh.
And then somebody wants to.
So then you give an one and the number two, what number you have.
I don't wanna do that.
And then visionary of second.
And you could, you're forced into the exact thing. Versus if you could just figure out that to you. We wouldn't have the strength to know.
Okay.
So you have all your posts, come on over to the other side, bring your posted help.
I would. We can do this the first year versus.
I would say, I wonder if it would change.
We would have been.
I think change sometime.
See you in bottom line deal. Yeah, we're just like, relationship.
So someone.
We don't care about.
What are you doing?
Um, just put it in between. Or choose one of the, we answer that on that. Each one.
I don't know you.
I know. I am. So I'm Rosa Klein, I'm the executive assistant to.
Okay, so your name is always there. I just don't, didn't have the face to match. Better than you. Very kind, thank you.
I think that's so important.
Data driven equal like data and real number.
No, no, I'm glad you did. I was gonna ask you to say that's where you are heavy on your work. So what does that tell you?
You're always letting that people have what? Now we can have work. So that.
And you need data to make a decision.
We're being, like, sometimes if I, I, during distress. So then I need data, you know, like, such as saying this trust someone. What they, like, what they, that's what other people thought that, I need great information. Because I think I've been data in this job where like, sometimes some people value, don't know that's what's the truth. But it's their true, not really it's.
Not making. Numbers don't lie. But for me, numbers don't lie and it helps meet up and push the vibe that comes with female perspective. Agenda and all that other stuff. And the data you get. And then we can start making decisions that are. Too good and good and to help, no, most marginalized. We are sisters and everybody's bleeding, but this is not a problem. And then we can attack that first. So for me, take decisions that are not. Based on opportunity, not based on healers, not based on affective, not based on who next to mine, but based on who has the need. Where is the need and innovation, the vision, the need and growth. And then understanding the problem first. There's a quote by, um. But basically, anyway, after that, when I tell you we know, okay, right, but basically it says that if I have 60 minutes of a problem. I would spend 55 minutes on it. Five minutes. And think about that though for a second. Because so often in our society, we are so quick. To find the solution from the thing of all. Big surface level information without understanding the root causes. And then we invest in programs, we invest in traditions. Because we don't really understand the problem. And we wonder why it doesn't work. And then we just recall, right? We cycle up that decision. Understanding who are the students or. What programs need help and support. What grade, right? Really having data that, that will highlight the information you need. And make the best. Because you're all here to make good decisions. Right? If you're all here, you don't just have all this time to come and volunteer without having that passion to work for itself. Like, we need your 11 months old at home to be here. All the others. Your board meetings, all the events you have to go to, job, family members, everything that, that you are. Your balance thing is serving on the board. You can see that. How can we make a good? And that comes from having the right time to make progress. All of the same time, having the same. So if you're heavy on data driven, you have some visionary and having visionary, it is important. Because you want to know, like a compass, where are you going? How can you know you're getting there? And what are come, categories we can put in trade to showcase that, yes, you're making progress. It's just like planning a trip, knowing where you're going, how you're going to get there. If you're just getting the client, say, oh, I'm just gonna go on vacation and you're in no plans, no destination. That could be fun. But planning the history, it's a serious business, right? Um, often line is important also because sometimes you, a lot of data driven individuals. You can spend a lot of time. And like, yes, you need more information.
You can check the girl out now with that.
I mean, you know, that, that thing would have shot right in the head because it is interesting. Yeah, I'm from the south, man. We're gonna kill it, skin it, hate it. That's why you guys, three of them, made your decision.
So bottom line, important.
Visionary, of visionary and of the widow.
Relationship, everything we do for our relationships. Right? And really working on establishing and strengthening your relationship with one another here to see if you. Feeling really comfortable, talking, asking questions, and then your relationship with all the other partners. In your district and outside of your.
Relationship.
There's some people who do that. So that's why. That's why we are like.
And I think it's because you guys, you to the board, you feel the best, a way that you. I think relationship is, I think that if the metro and I would have did this the first year, I think that we would have, relationship would have been one of our working style. I just think that it's, it comes with the very, who then and others, because you want to work together. You see it as a team. You haven't had those really contentious moments yet that ended up burning bridges and just even people like. Separated and straddled it yet. So I think that's. I mean, that's what you mean.
Well, it can also change, then you're the boyfriend. Sometimes you think that he's men and he could be different as well.
No, I, I just, there's, I mean, being the way it's played out. I think it helps because, you know, one of, I was just thinking about where I'm going to be upon. Trying to break every box, right? And so many things are not hard to come through. So it, it, it's also very, you know, trying to be that person that I don't want to be. Like the historian, which nobody at this one wants to be. Yeah, so I mean, but just those things that I can, you know, hopefully be able to like. Now how do we do right some of the work with the people who actually wants to do that? You know, level of work, like the bottom line works is out here. Like, that means that there's things that I just send back from and that know that I don't have to be the front line person to every. You know, point on this table. But I think, I mean, to me, that, that's helpful because I do want to do my food base. Y'all take it over.
Well, it's, it's a ability. Remember the elements, the elements. Google, um, by the way, so dependable, where being able to depend on each other to do what you do, that what comes naturally to you. Not like going so much to exist, otherwise you just have to paint him and leave the district. But you bring a specific unique lens on your own, like this. And that's really important. Right? That voice, that perspective is really important. So although you don't have a story, and I think one of, it may be for visionary, you take for, for meeting guidelines, learn from the past. So that's important, right? Learning from the past while moving forward to future. You always have to look at the past, what was done, what was successful, what was not. So you don't need people saying, we take, we make new ones. But at least you're not, you have learned from the past, right?
Yeah, so I want to touch on that, it's the language, maybe isn't the best title. Maybe it's recalls or maybe, you know, like. But I've heard all of you say, how did we get here? What have we done before? How do we change? Those are all, in my opinion, historian questions. So, you know, every, I've heard everybody do searching on how we got, how do we get here? How do we change?
And it's important to understand how did we get here?
But I think we're on the best thing. I think the, I think the practice. Practice, but it's like this, right? You can't give the word behind our real working thought, right? I think if we have enough time, you know, they're bringing some of the things, well, what do you talk about how we got here? But at the same time, with override that is the vision or override that is what's the bottom line, people let us figure out, override that is the data. So, I mean. The historian, I think that the unique thing about this district, you can never escape the past. There's somebody who's going to do things like you through. Public comments, through emails, through your own experience in this district, or English district. You're all, the past is, we literally have a living path. So I think our past is our present, which is part of the problem.
And I want to follow up on that because the other thing I was gonna say is, there is a historian past everywhere, not just here, everywhere. Which is, we've always done it this way. You know, which is the dark side of the historian.
It prevents you from moving forward, right? If, if you, but if you look at it as a learning lesson. Right? What, you know, why it didn't work? Why did it not work in the past? Or what was successful? If you look at it, the deadline, it can be helpful.
But it goes back to, because depending on whether it's for, you know, really, we do have a lot of exploring into history here within the district. And I think, you know, one of the things is that I, how do we now take that history and make it applicable on in our district today? I mean, my peers is a great example of that, right? And we have, you know, many others here who have dedicated years and years. Of, you know, work to this district that only they can, you know, bring that. Because it was here before, hi, before the bottom line. And, and it's just like, how do we now implement some of that work in those partnerships with the relationships, relationships, like. You know, so I think we do have that knowledge that it's gonna take that whole mixture of everything to give us a cross. And even though we don't have, I guess, anyone there. That is supported by everyone outside that brings that to us. And I think, you know, having, you know, acknowledgement for that, it's like, we don't, we don't necessarily have that on the board as a. Strength, but the community aspect of what that is, right? It was really trauma.
But I also wanted to think that as the board, in my opinion, one of the things that I ran just asking, he had critical, he had critical pedagogy, but you know, people say. The district needs to be so good. To who? And for who? And then, then talking about history, looking at history, who made critical comments. I think it's also beneficial to those of us in positionality to make policy for the future. We have to be able, when someone says, I want to go back to the way it used to be. Why? Was it good for you and only you? Or was it good for the whole? And will it be good for the district that we turn to that? Data dictates that we're not the same district that we were, so we gotta move to. We're not the same communities that we were. But what aspects do that, do you want to bring in that grid line, in that grid? But we have to have critical pedagogy question, in my opinion.
Two, two quick reflections. I think that. I was not surprised to see where anyone was. I feel like if I was being honest with where everyone would have been, I would have picked it, except for Cheryl's. That was surprising to me. I would have thought she would be in relationship. Um, and myself too, actually. Uh, so that was, that was more shocking, so. But then I think that this is also really important, I think, last few. It shows that what's important to us. Um, like, I think that, if I may, I think for, like, you two, relationship, I think is really important because. You have not been on the board very long, right? So I think when there is staff, it's me or me. Then relationships, not as important. Not that it's an edit, of course. It's not for Cheryl any day. But that's not, to me, as important as, hey, please respond to that, right? Or, hey, please send me that information that I need to try. Uh, not saying that that would be important to you, but I think staff, this shows that, hey, like. And I'm saying this, we can do, but like, a share of the factors that, like, look, the board truly cares about the data. So every time we're asking them to make a decision, we should have all the data for them. Because that's what they need, right? Um, or how do we connect with vision? Right? Or like, for, like, for, you know, like, we ultimately have to bring them, like. This is the recommendation we have for you, because that's also important to some other board and ultimately that shows, right? So, uh, I think to me, it's, it wasn't just asking for, just do whatever you're able to, but more important for staff to see. Where we are and to get kind of like that, you know, approach, how we do, how we make our choice.
So quickly, Lincoln, Wendy, and the nutrition services, or our, our.
All right. So in your, the two page template that you have, it does have a section of comfortable pieces that are different. I think it's really important to look at. So when you have time, I mean, it's coming, we can take a look. Um, when I sent the memo, it will have information on who has what stuff. So then you can look back. It's, it's critical to look at it and decide for yourself how you're going to work together. In your case, because so many of you fall in that data driven, not as critical. And districts that may have only one or two people. And so if they ask for data, they ask for more information. Others, maybe bottom line individuals will be like, oh, we have enough information, let's make our decision, well, and be done, right? So understand what each working style means. What their needs are to make a decision is really important for all of you. In your case, we agree on, on a couple of areas quite a bit, so. Let's go back. All right, it's break time. So take it, let me tell you what we'll do when you come back. We're going to take a look at roles and responsibility. And then expectations. Oh, great. Uh, let's do 10 minutes, okay? 10 minutes? Stretch your legs, refill your cups, come back at 11:10.
So it's gonna be a break, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Well, that is that, oh, yes, too, but we already got the same right here.
But that's fine. Really? It was, they made the decision so quickly.
And I think there were, I got the call 30 minutes ago, they made the decision, like, we don't have other kids, so we have to have everybody go home.
I mean, the kids were upset, right?
I always travel first. Other than that, they had to walk home.
But that's because, you know, picture, it was saying.
I'm just glad everything came back.
Yeah.
And then. The city wasn't. Well, DJ was sending out, not to bet, it wasn't backed up, running so after four. But everybody's getting that message and then all of a sudden.
This is the. Mike, so when you're in breakout.
In your folders, you have four documents. Please pull those out. It is two board policy and two board violence. It will be board by nine thousand, the role of the board. Board by nine, 200 limits on board member authority. Two policy. Board policy 2021 hundred, concept of administration, role of the speaker. We can pull those for. We can pull those four documents out. The need of hope, they have all four? They don't have anyone. Nine thousand ninety two hundred, two thousand twenty one.
Twenty one ten on the other side, with the, you are close.
Thank you.
All right, so pull those out. Keep them handy. You're going to work in two. You're going to work with your colleagues to review the assigned document. Highlight, individually, you're going to read and highlight what's important. And then the group, the three of you in your group are going to have a conversation about what you read, what's important, and how you would explain the main points of what you read to the other. Okay? Thank you. All right, so you have all those four documents, nine thousand ninety two hundred, two thousand twenty one. We're going to divide up, the group right piercing half. So you have your colleague, you'll work with, so from Jamila, from Guatemala, you're going to work on the right hand side. Uh, try to stay focused. Right? Do I need to rearrange? I think I trust that you can, you can do this. So each group, you're going to do nine thousand ninety two hundred. So you're going to read it individually on your own first, highlight, and then come together and have a conversation. You're going to review two thousand twenty one ten. So we can set aside the nine thousand ninety two hundred, because that's not, you're not going to review it right now. You're going to read those on your own first, highlight what's important, then come together, and three of you will decide what are the highlights of the document to review. Okay, that's going to give us role of the board, role of the panel. So let's have, uh, let's do about ten minutes on that. And if you're done earlier, we can come back together for ten minutes, individual assignment first, then group, and then the large group. Thank you. So as you read your documents individually, you highlighted what's important, like the highlights of the document. Now you can have a conversation about what you read, what's important, what you want to report out to the others, what are the highlights? Like, you don't want to read the whole document, what are you looking at the main ones? From two thousand.
So one of the things that I have is, was the second paragraph. Um, yeah, this is important, this is the chapter I did, it's the government administered regulation and registration, of course. Uh, the board also expects a separate education base, the culture of our, of the district, that focuses. The board, and then moving on to the, the board, and super ten should work together as a team, and the exercise of official governance, the board and super typical, the savage protocols that describe how the governance will operate and put up a narrative to agreements regarding board meeting operations that communicate with super ten and the board. And then I just jumped down all the way to the end. This board says, the superintendent may delegate, so the district staff, any duty will close upon him or her by the board. This delegation shall not relieve into the general responsibilities for actions taken by her, by his or her.
Anything to add to that? Um. Yeah, those are, those are. Sharon is. Yeah, so. I don't have anything more, much more to add. I think this is really important, to me, the most important. I, I don't know. I think that, you know, I'm very much for positive. Starting as an artist, especially you. It's like the words, that just kind of send us, like, maybe a little harder than I'm used to, but it's a city of, like, the board decides on the super, and that's it. I see this around here, as direly, helping, helping with the goals. Very much so, so I said, as a really, a team, well, the or, or, uh, drop off, you know, we're not experts in the district or investigation, and so I feel super, or the, a good or true partnership.
That is, that's something that we thought, uh, it really is, nobody else can do it in the, that will, in the, or this team, they can do it in the, in the, and then they, some.
I mean, one of the challenges of being just doing all this. When you, you know, when you're in a concept, I think there's a huge misconception, how you're brought to work. Or what actually did it, well, I mean, you're wrong, you're gonna be the person, or just a representative, you're gonna change all those things. And you have no gratitude, of what you need to do those things, and so it's very interesting, you know, because I don't use community reading, sort of like, what do you think I'm talking about? It's this, our national structure with us, now people are like, huh? They're like, I don't like this, I don't know, response, no, I am not. I am not, I am not a, you know, another. So there's been some interest in these perceptions of, and if you were to write. Most.
I think that would be better. How do we know? I think that there's a lack of, you know, of information, I'm not saying there's information out there, that people are not understanding, what is the role of a board? What is the role of a board member or liaison on a committee? What is the role, like, there's expectations that we don't, we, we don't, there's expectations of us that we cannot adhere to. And that's because sometimes there is no information out there to, like, fulfill evidence, like, oh, I thought you you were the direct person, but like, no, I don't direct anyone. Like, I am not in charge of, like, well, listen, like, I don't care, you know, direction. And I think that's where it goes back to, like, the lack of information out there, like, what's everyone's role? How do we now get that out there so people understand? But it's also because I think as the board, we have tried to fulfill needs, where the boss has been dropped. What do you, what I mean, like, I want to come in here and have a board, I don't want to have any oversight on, you know, what anybody else. So, so sometimes these board members have had to do that, because the ball has been dropped, right? And even like, that's how they think, you know, we want this to be collaborative, we want this to be, you know, team effort. I think we need to get there as a team, but at the end of the day, we are the ones being held accountable for everything that you're doing, and you're gonna be held accountable for everything that we do, because that is the system that we are now having to, and that's the system we want to follow through. Like, something's funny, that you need to hold that accountability. And know that we are gonna hold you accountable, so that you're able to, that's accountable. And I think we have to have it. And we have this message, you know, since I've been on the board, there's been fixed messages, how to communicate, like, who to communicate with, and every, you know, you're different than most of the things, I already worked with most, you know, you're different, you know, it's that change, and it has to be, like, the expectation has to be the same for more recipients. So I think clearly having, there, if you like, just sort of what part you're talking about. Just as a day's out there, it's everybody.
How would you want to sum this up for, um, or a prayer?
Uh, is it a little brain?
So that second or third paragraphs were the most disturbing?
The air focus, any focus, very good. And do you want to mention something?
Yeah, I have a little power, I hope it's not, I'll show. Oh, thanks for clarifying that. Well, they will, yeah, sure, and. And trustees also didn't help. So, you know, there's some.
But at least that has to do with us, that, well, they had to show us. And ensuring that we are shown now for each other. Like, you know, I said, I said, like, all our, you know, our data is different. You know, there's things that, you know, my days are, you're gonna be there than my year, right? So it's like, ensuring that, you know, there's something around my area, not, not your area, that. People who are working as a whole, so, even though you. We are, we're working in part, as well.
So only one board member.
And I think it's not hard, so, the chicken has to go with eight blocks, yeah.
Is this a before lunch conversation or a working lunch conversation?
Well, we could make it a working lunch, if you like that lunch is here.
Who the hell am I, this is your thing, obviously, that's the question.
It's a good question.
Just because I saw the.
Then you have a lot.
Yes, I took fifteen minutes. Maybe even less.
Maybe even less. But.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Not.
You can do that on anything. We can continue on.
I don't.
If you're doing. Good.
Okay. In case you haven't got it. We're gonna go on. We're gonna. It kills me. That's why I got back up on it. I'm sorry. For you.
Are you done with your?
Yeah. We're gonna wing it a little. One one two. We could speak over that one.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you so much. I know that that this is not the first time we have seen the bylaws that end the policy. But having a conversation about it's really important. What you read, what you understand from it, what's really important. So you're going to take and go have about. Fifteen minutes. Before we take lunch. To for each of you to share what you read, what's important. What are the highlights? So we'll start at nine thousand ninety four hundred. And who is your reporter?
I'm the reporter.
Fourteen hour. All right.
Um, okay, so.
And which one do you wanna start? Nine thousand?
So I'm gonna combine them a little bit.
Okay.
Just because, I mean, nine thousand is is the role of the board. Obviously, this is like the hefty and thick one. Um. But we felt that really in order for us to be able to do this work well on the nine thousand. We need to be able to do the ninety two thirty three, which is um. The limits of a core member authority. Uh, because this is what kind of sets the tone. For the superintendent and for staff. Um, and how to set direction. So. Nine nine thousand explains like what do we set direction on? Um, and ninety two hundred is really how we do that. Um, and in order to do it, we. We talked for a while that. It's gonna take for all of us to make a commitment. Um. And start building trust. That once we have said, this is what I wanna do and wanna follow. That we are starting new. What was the name of the? Session? Sorry, it was a.
New beginning. Beginning.
That it's a new beginning. We have a new superintendent. That we got to wrap the process. Um, and then we gotta make a commitment that. We will. Follow the majority that we follow. You know, it's. Um, and that we must work as a group. Um, and then ultimately. Because in the past, the board, even in the last six months. Many of us have felt like we have to micromanage. Or we have to uh overstep our role. That in order for us not to do that, which is not our role to. You know, contact Melissa our facilities issue. Or to show up to an event and take it over or whatever, right? That it does take trust and commitment. But it also takes accountability of staff. And each other. So really, we have to be able to do that well. So then if we set an expectation of the superintendent. Then we need to let her do her thing. Right? And be able to actually achieve it. Uh. And then also hold her accountable as a volunteer. If it doesn't happen, right? Because I think a lot of the challenges that we've talked about in previous months are really at the cabinet level. Or a director or staff members. But we can't hold them accountable. We have to let Cheryl hold them accountable. Um, so it's not just about trust and commitment. We're also about accountability. And I feel like in last five years, seven of the board, we have never mastered how we're able to. Uh, hold our superintendent accountable. In a short, like the direct. Uh, and collaborative way. Uh, which has led to us not following. Uh, ninety two hundred and sorry, thousand. Um. So. Um. Let's see. If there was something good in this. Um. Anything good in this one? You go.
Uh, ninety two hundreds is about behavior. And as. Board members. We have not behaved. To the law of ninety two hundred. I think that every board member and speaking for myself, I know that I've closed in the first four. Several times. And I've actually made the first four a part of. My board trustee style. So I think that the way I am, the way I behave as a board member. So I think that. Understanding that that. Does damage. And it's not the way it's supposed to be. It may have been the way it was out of necessity and just to keep the district afloat, which I believe is true. It doesn't have to be the way it is. So taking time to really uh. Alter my behavior to where that it kind of fits this without losing who I am. As a individual and as a trustee, as a bottom line person. It's going to take some unlearning, relearning. About how to do this. So going to have to have grace and accountability. And it's one of those things that it needs to be fact. If only we can check each other. It needs to be checked, but it also needs to be checked with the grace of I have now developed that. And habits take a while. And the only way to be rid of one habit is implement another. So I'm complete.
Oh, I want to be there for the mission. It's also, it really is gonna also require some work and support from the superintendent. To also hold us accountable. Right? And if we send her an email about something. But maybe it's just a heads up or an issue that staff should know about and they should take care of. But if we are directing the superintendent on something. She should also be able to tell us. And we should all give her the grace to say, hey. Of course, you are directing me about a uh uh issue that is bigger. In this case, and I think, you know, what is being built up? So. Let's bring it up to a new floor so I can get real direction from the majority. Right? Um. Because then also what we have seen in the past, I've seen in the past. Uh, is when a superintendent just moves out the direction of one potential. Then that leads to stress, which then that leads to micromanagement or, you know. Um, so I think that's also very fire real commitment, which. Might be uncomfortable for the superintendent to help. And get. And being that, and I wanna do it, but let's just have a larger conversation. Uh. So. Yeah.
I would like to leave here. For for my growth point with some sentence starters and some sentence sentence completion. Like, when I send an email, what I would like to have is agreed upon sentence. You know, this is not direction. This is just a heads up of what I noticed or whatever. Something to give that. Deep breath pause to the superintendent. I'm not, please don't take this as direction. This is just me showing you what I noticed, what I've seen, what I've heard. Whatever to make the district a better version of itself. Because there are those of us who are feet on the ground every day. And we have people coming to us telling us. Seventy five thousand things. And we do wanna be, I believe, all of us, a part of the team. And what is being a part of the team looks like, look like without sabotaging. I think when we send an email to the superintendent and we don't have anyone like that on there. We're sabotaging not only her, not only her staff, but ourselves. Because then it does get done, you build somebody away. Wait a minute, I told you that this is gonna happen, you know, blah, 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 blah. So I think that having some type of agreed upon sentence. Or. A sentiment of a sentence. That we let the superintendent know, this is a suggestion, just a heads up, just saw it, just so you know. Type of thing to where it doesn't fit you in a position that. All right, Jamila said something, we gotta move. Then let's stop everything we're doing and focus on. What? Jamila said, because if not, he's gonna be held, hey. Enclosed cabinet or whatever, or I'm gonna give a nasty email. I'm gonna give a nasty text or whatever. I think that we just need to set everybody up for success, including ourselves. By talking about this behavior and what we can actually agree to. I'm complete.
Next. You're. And we started everything. Beautiful job.
Word.
You. You did a great job because you read it, you read into documents. You understood it. And you explained it really well. Great job. All right, let's move. We'll talk more about it after lunch. But let's go ahead and move on to two thousand and twenty one ten.
We'd like to do two thousand. Oh. I took the notes on.
All right. And which one are you starting with?
Uh, with two thousand.
Okay.
And. Uh, Arab two in its entirety, the superintendent shall provide leadership in developing administrative regulations and organizational structures. Decision making processes and staff action plans that allow the district to fulfill its vision and rules. The board also expects the superintendent to help shape the culture and environment of the district in a manner that focuses. District operations on enhancing student achievement, encourages positive relationships within the community. And instills competence in district schools. So. Unanimously, that was an important paragraph. The next paragraph that there was consensus consensus on. Was the board and superintendent shall work together in a team that is. In the exercise of district. Governance, the board and superintendent. Shall establish protocols that describe how the government team will operate. Including but not limited to agreements regarding board meeting operations. And communications between the superintendent and the board. So once again, structures. Um. So that people know how to operate within those structures. And then. Uh, serving out the. Had, um. One string. Um, the last paragraph, superintendent may delegate to other districts staff duties. Close upon compared to the board. This delegation shall not relieve the superintendent a responsibility for actions taken by his or her means. Board has one employee. Uh, work is done through the separate superintendent through. Delegation to those employees and the superintendent is held accountable to the work. There's one, one district employee responsible for all delegation. The superintendent is responsible for operating within parameters of the law and role policies. And then we had a little discussion about community understandings and. How there, how the community may not really fully understand the role of the board. That sometimes it feels like. You know, you're running area one or you're running area four, like the kinds of. Feedback that come forward expecting resolution, which isn't a board member's. You know, responsibility. Um and it's just interesting, like I mentioned, when you run. You run like you're running for the superintendent or being a principal, you're gonna fix all these things, but you don't have the actual. Authority to, to do that type of work. So just. When you run in general, just out there in the community, there's a, there may be a. Misunderstanding what the law actually does. So there's some just interesting dynamics about. What's out there in my people. Anything else?
Well, I think it intertwines with a lot of, you know, the conversation. It turns with a lot of like. The reason behind of like establishing systems in place and. That accountability piece, I think, to the superintendent because. I think, like we just said, the lack of our overstepping came from a lack of doing. On the staff part and the communication as well. So. You know, starting off in a direction of like, this is where we're at. This is how we're moving. So then no matter who's sitting in the super tendency. We know exactly where our position is. And I think that. You know, having to change that framework to like. Not look within, not, I am starting to follow things makes. Not just her work easier, but our work easier as well. But also establishing cohesiveness, because one thing that Lesley brought up was. You know, how we're now in district areas. And how that kind of can be decisive to like the work that we're doing. But how do we as a board now establish that communication one of where our duties are? But also how we show up. And I think because our. States are so different and we bring something to the board so different, you know, really establishing that we are here as one board. That means that I'm not just showing up to things that have to do with my areas, but that we're showing up. To wherever we can, because the important thing that people out in the district in the community want to see is. A board member. They don't care who's board member it is or what board member. They just wanna see. Someone show up for them because they've been forgotten, right? So I think really establishing those protocols of like, how do we show up cohesively? And show up as one, which is. I think that's, you know, really an important thing to how do we move forward. But I think when we're talking about. You know, really. How we are. Holding accountability. It's nothing personal. Like I said, I think those are just things that we have to establish. Just to make, you know, our position a little bit easier. So, you know, really. The accountability part has to not just end here. It has to trickle all the way down. So that everyone knows that they're being held accountable. We're being held accountable. She's being held accountable. Staff is now being held accountable. And that means that then we're changing the narrative of someone's doing that.
Just wanted to add, we didn't talk about this other group of conversation. We talked about a rework that would be coming. And it's what I need from the board is your support. In letting you develop. And I know that everyone has, they have thoughts. About who up when where. But I need, when I'm held accountable, I need to be able to. And understand how you're organized. Within the district. If there's a need in, I think gathering data right now, but. Things that I've seen and hearing, I think that there is a need, but there is also a need for. Need to, with the, the board's support. To be able to do some more organization and then think about how would be.
Cheryl, we'll be talking about that after lunch specifically. So I wanna make sure I honor the time on the agenda. It is eleven forty-five. Take lunch, we'll come back. We're not done with your group yet. We wanna hear more. And then I'll go let you know how you're moving into the next segment, which is expectations and communication. Leading us to the whole setting. So enjoy lunch and we'll come back.
What's the, what's the new setting?
For me? So you have, you have the option of doing your working lunch. If you wanna grab your lunch or back there, or you can just, we can restart that. That's okay. It's up to you.
However, maybe take fifteen minutes. Work calls, whatever, and then maybe do the. Working much. Is it something we're already timed, no?
The only thing I would recommend is no. Crinkly crackers on the zoom so that we can all hear.
So grab lunch and then we'll just.
Okay, so twelve, twelve fifteen is the.
Yeah, let's do twelve fifteen. Okay, take the lunch so then.
Okay, so we'll do that in twenty-two.
All right, welcome back everyone. Thanks to Rosa, did you order lunch for us? It was wonderful. Exactly, it takes time to do so much behind that. Really, I appreciate it. So. Let's get back to where we left off, which was talking about. Policy two thousand twenty-one ten. I wanna make sure we. Finish that conversation before we move on. So far, I'm really liking what you're discussing as far as. The themes that are emerging and I took some notes off here with you. After your group completed your segments, so. Uh would you like to continue that thing? Are you the?
Sure, would anybody else like to do it? Then it'll be me. Alright, so in general, that's been very important. Almost every word in putting on this page. First paragraph. Which consensus governed words that desires to establish of that good. Or handle relationship with the superintendent. Important words here, put productive work in our relationship with the superintendent. Uh and to ensure the work at the same time is focused on student learning and. Board also desires to provide a fair basis for holding superintendent accountable. The responsibilities of super managers is held in all. In the superintendent's contract that throughout board policy and the national relationship. And for superintendent cotton. Providing a fair basis of holding superintendent accountable. It's also really important. For many of the like, you. For those people who sit on board know that like, those athletic events contracts. Uh employee contracts. And my second. Second sentence paragraph was also important that the. Board clarifies expectations and goals. For the superintendent at the beginning of every evaluate, evaluation year. So you're going in with expectations and. Uh what, uh the hopes for accomplishment are. And then. Uh the superintendent serving as part of the governance team. Responsibilities and support for operations and decision making. I see, I see it this way. I hope other people see it that way that. That, you know, there's things that the district wants to accomplish and there are things that the board wants to accomplish and. Both, you know, need to balance both. In, in the process. And then, again, found the. Mayors tell their responsibilities to the.
Question about those two questions. It's very clear, right? What the role of superintendent, what the role of authority is. And ultimately, the superintendent is responsible. For overall information.
I'm sorry, just need a second for a second.
So if you want to add anything, Cheryl. You might play them out. When's the beginning of the evaluation year? When you start on, depending on what's in the contract. Sometimes there's language in the contract when. But evaluation. Usually the. The end point of it, when you actually evaluate based on goals, it's in May, June. You have a midpoint, a mid-year progress, if you around January. So then you have that full year. Now again, depending on when the superintendent, I work in the contract.
I have a question. We keep talking about setting expectations and direction, right? In order for us, I think that we are really good, have been good. I think we could be really good at setting expectations, set a direction. What I am not good at. Is accountability. I'm good at making, I'm getting mad, right? Like, hey Cheryl, you did not do this, right? That's never happened, that's never happened so far. But hey, like, this did not happen. I had such an expectation. I'm good at like calling. A colleague and be like, I'm mad about this, right? This didn't get accomplished, this didn't get that. And then that's it, right? Like, I think that. I've seen, I, I, my expectation is that Dr. Khan is holding herself accountable to them, do what she asked them to do. So for us to do the same with her. I think I need a tool. To be able to do that. Right? And for us to do it as a board. So I have not seen it. We've done well. Outside of when it comes. You know. May. And like, you did not accomplish these goals, right? And here's my rating. I think that. While I'm here. It has to be of the ability for us to say, hey, like. You know. You didn't do this correctly, so let me spend the time. And my, for my view. To hear you why it didn't happen and also to have a conversation, right? And I guess I. When are we going to and how are we going to choose? The format of that, right? That is like. Something that you want, right? And something that we want. And like, we are able to do throughout the year as a team. Does that make sense? Am I explaining it right? I don't know.
I think you're dying in it, right? I think it was one of those things when. When I was in board leadership, when I brought up the idea of having a debrief after our board meeting. And then everybody was like, hmm, we, we didn't trust each other, right? Because it was gonna turn into. This instead of a productive way of, hey, this is what we did. This is how we can improve it. This is what we need to do. I think that it's beneficial to have, I've seen the district do hot washes. Like, they talk about. What after an event or after an incident or after whatever, they have a conversation and I've been sitting in those rooms. I think it's valuable if we have. Roads and glows or how to. Hold each other accountable or how to, when we're talking to the superintendent, how to put that level of. Not this accountability, yes, but also conversation. Like, this is what we saw in this. This is what. It could improve next time that we do this, because nothing is new under the sun. We're going to do all of these things. So if we have a conversation and vacation about it. I think this leads to my working style of, I love a good list. I love a good, if we do, you know, Swansea, we were supposed to be here, if we end up where we said we were going. So I think communication is even that. I'm completely.
Away in that conversation. I think that a couple of things came up. One is. What does that accountability piece look like with that to purpose? With my creative home new accountability system, because Cheryl mistaken the table. I'm gonna be cautious with that. It's. It's how the board communicates and engages each superintendent. Put that out there, let us sit with that for a second. Also, the evaluation process. Those, that's where you clarify expectations. And that's what I'm held accountable to. And so. When we start to talk about. Everyone, you didn't do this, you didn't do this, you didn't do this. I'm accountable to these things at this period. Or for this period of time. And I wanna make sure that we're not getting too far outside of that process as well. And not minimizing that process for day-to-day. Direction, we can feedback. So I, I think it in the balance. But also, again. Taking it back to making sure that what you are holding me accountable to. Is what the board as an entity has held past superintendent and accountable for this role has engaged in that way. I'm acknowledging the fact that I'm a woman, I'm a black woman, and I wanted to have served a permanent role. In this organization. And I don't want things to be different. Because I'm in this role. I just wanna lifting that up as. Next week and two weeks, I'm, I'm, I'll be in an access event to talk about women in leadership. And what does that look like? And how women are held accountable differently than men in some cases? What does that look like? And what does it look like in terms of your career path as well? So I, I just maybe today I have a heightened. Awareness of that and that's on my mind because I'm caring for that. And also just be aware and just to be cautiously and fully mindful of what you. What you're saying or what you're.
Man, I appreciate you saying that. I think that my problem is that we haven't done. So then, like, I have not seen a good sample of it. I'll just become totally transparent and honest. We had a really hard time voting last. And individuals who have conversation. But I don't want individuals to be fully accountable. We need to fully accountable as a board. Right? So I, I completely want to acknowledge what you said about. You know, definitely, I think so as black women specifically, we are held to a higher standard. Than men or people or white people. And I've learned that from you, you're like quite a bitch, you know? Um, so I wanna, I have my own privilege. But I also think that we just didn't have anything, right? So I do want to get that from you. And our resources, right? For us to be able to do it correctly. Because I do think that. I failed, we failed some board. On hold, on doing accountability correctly. And I don't want to do more accountability than like what is expected, but obviously. I don't know what accountability should look like on another level. Um because then also we, you know, that leads to. Individual board members holding you accountable that could hurt as well, right? And we saw that, like. We were discussing, like, our passport, Alex and James, like, there was one individual that would say, like. I'm gonna ask for you to get fired if you don't do what I'm asking you to do, right? And that also wasn't accountability correctly. So then if we don't have the tool or the means or the procedure, then I think it could lead to that, right? Where us individuals create an accountability issue, which could also smell awful, right? So.
And I think it goes back to, I think it goes back to ninety-two hundred. Our behavior. Our behavior as a board has to be. Transparent, accountable and written down. So then that's where we hold a level of accountability because if not. I know that for me personally, what I did was micromanage. That was not helpful. With the last permanent superintendent. Not the interim, but the last permanent superintendent. I was a micromanager and I was a baby superintendent. Right? And that wasn't helpful productive or allowed him to. Do his full due diligence, right? But I believe that I was a micromanager because these things were not followed by all of the board members. So it was like I was trying to squeeze my way into, hey, hear me, see me, I'm part of this too. And that looked like micromanaging, but what it was, was trying to be validated as a member of the team. So. What I want is to ensure. Your success by putting it on paper. This is what we want and require and giving you that. Helpful feedback in the moment. Like, I've seen you hold your staff accountable. So for me, I'm like. I've seen that happen. So that's not something I have to be like, did you see what you? I saw, I know you saw it because you held them accountable in the moment, right? Or you held them accountable by giving a summary of. I saw this, I'm gonna let you know I saw it and this is how we corrected it. Whatever that looks like, I think that we all just need to be on the same page or at least in the same library or close to the same book. To make sure that we are not doing our behavior. Is not setting the system up to fail.
This is actually a really good and important discussion that we are having. Because part of your role, the board, the five of you, is to set clear expectations. And these are expectation based, expectations based on the mood. Of your specific reading history. And these are the kind of goals you set for your superintendent that are aligned, you're held accountable. They're not just what you each individually desire, but it was needed. And goals that are aligned with what you already established, right? Based on state priority. What I heard, um, all of you mentioned, which is really nice because I like you to keep these kind of. The theme in the back of your mind as we move throughout the day. What I heard was showing up. Showing up for each other, really important. But and how you show up. Do you show up a hundred percent of you, your energy and your attention, or you will be present? So what does it mean to be present? How do you know when someone is fully present? Right? And the difference between hearing and listening. When you know someone is really listening to you, what do you notice? Those are the kind of behaviors that Jamila appears to be carrying, and that's really important. I heard trust. Trust is the foundation. If you don't have trust, you're not going to be able to move the needle. You talked about moving the needle. That's not gonna happen. He'll regain trust. There'll be a people who trust one another. Trust that the job gets done properly. Trust that you can ask questions, that you can offer feedback. So without that foundation of trust. You can talk about all these wonderful ideas. But then they'll always make us between concept and apple. Right? It's good that you're, you're having this conversation. But you are the ones, six of you are the ones who can bring those. Concepts, right? I won't be here. Hold anyone accountable. I won't be here to check in. It's all of you making the commitment that you're going to do things differently. You're going to establish and strengthen trust. And that begins with sharing. Right? You're in this together. So the sooner that you work on that trust among this team. The sooner than the community is going to trust you. So I also heard commitment. Commitment to. First level of commitment is to yourself. You've signed up for this, whether appointed or elected. You're here now. What are you going to do? And how committed are you to yourself? Right? And then commitment to your governance team. Commitment to your district and your community, all to a different level. I also heard. You're talking about accountability. And holding the system accountable. Is a big part of your role as the board, as the governance team. Right? You're not here just to do a job. And I know as a former board member. It is a big job. It truly is. It's not just some meetings a month. And signing some paper and voting. It's much, much deeper than that. It's showing up. As you're presenting the board. It's for you to know that if, let's say Leslie goes to a given. She's representing all of you. So if you can't go, because you have jobs and you have families. You know there is a representation. You need to, same thing, right? So having that understanding that you're all in this together, you need to support one another. Even though you have your trusty areas, the whole district is your area. And all those students are your students, not just your, your own area. And that's really important to understand. There are different levels of accountability you need to make sure are in place. One is for the board to hold yourself accountable. To hold superintendent accountable. It's only fair that you also do a board self-evaluation. However you do it, whichever company you go with, whichever tool. It's important to do that on a regular basis. It's also good role monitoring for your district. You hold your, uh, no, not you, but superintendent hold staff accountable. System superintendent, and the board directors. Well, that accountable needs to be addressed. Besides the PSE of board self-evaluation. Superintendent evaluation is such an important process. Because you set goal. You come together to have a conversation about what needs to happen. How it's going to happen is up to your superintendent because she is the knowledgeable. Person who was hired for this position. So you're not telling her how to do the job, but you, the five of you are coming up with certain areas you need to focus on. Those goal areas, and then she can work with her staff and come up with the action plan. There needs to be a progress review in January, mid-year. So if something is not going well, that's your opportunity. You're waiting in the end of the year. To do, like you said, you do ratings. Rating, number rating is not something I recommend. Uh, and we can talk about that. And I can send you some information on superintendent evaluation and a tool that. I like and I, I use when I facilitate superintendent evaluation sessions. But you don't have to wait till the end of the year to say, then get done. That's not setting up for success. That's waiting to say you didn't do this. In what functioning, high functioning society team does that happen? Think about that, right? So clear expectations. Having a tool that you use that you can actually utilize, you can keep your note. So when you come together in May, then you have your own notes based on. Self-evaluation that the superintendent will share with you, but she'll give you her self-evaluation. And then based on that, in a closed session, we come together, the five of you. Will, um, look at everyone's comments and will come up with one document. That's one voice, one unified voice. On what the final evaluation. Invite her back in, she can ask questions. Um, and then once everyone is, is happy with that end document, then that goes into the file. It's a very important document. And, and I feel like you need to really be mindful and thoughtful about the process, the instrument. And, um, and, and the whole. Process of holding your superintendent. It needs to be done. Accurately, clearly, kindly. So then you're all helping with that pulling up the needle. Otherwise, it's not gonna move itself. Right? And I mean, that's the first, isn't that the first on your list? And everything else is gonna fall under that. But I, I, what I'm hearing conversations today are really promising. That you're really looking at what you need to do and holding yourselves accountable individually. How you show up. Again, you took this role. How will you, how committed are you? And how will you vote your vote? You have that choice, but it's too much. If, um, if it doesn't make sense. If you're not enjoying it, because there needs to be a level of joy also. It's, it's important and serious work. But it should be joyful. It's continuing to the future of your, your students, your community members. So that's a question for each of you. How committed are you? And just think about that for, I don't know, twenty-five seconds. Write down a number for yourself in your note. You don't have to share it. I don't need to know. How committed are you to yourself? Put a percentage down for yourself. And then the next level, how committed are you to scheme, to governance? Superintendent, the board, how committed? And then the broader district and community, what's your commitment with? And that's something for all of you to imply on your own individually. If you have less than a hundred percent for each of those areas, why is that? And then what are you doing here? Alright, so we are going to move on to the next, and we do a little bit of moving around on the agenda just because sometimes conversations take us a different path. And I feel it's important to, um, to complete each discussion. So the next segment is, is on expectations. You have not had the opportunity, I don't believe you have, to talk about what the board expects from the superintendent, what the superintendent expects from the board.
Sorry, can I interrupt just for a second? I'm still going to go through, we're gonna move it to.
Go through, refresh me, uh, read, go through.
Need a deeper understanding of goals and results.
And then three.
Establish agreements on the four elements of teamwork, collaboration, communication, and solid.
So we started for the goal three, you're moving into a that fully.
Okay, so shall I take in some of the comments on two? Is there a comment on goal two for Seth to gain a deeper understanding of goals and results? Looks like we're wrapping that up.
There's, there's no photo comment online.
Yeah, okay.
Three, okay, go through.
Sorry, and all these, you'll see that, yeah, they kind of flow, you know, they kind of flow into another, so there's no start and start. And at any point, when you have questions, even if it's something that we have talked about, if you need to ask or if you are something to ask, please do so. It's your mission. I'm facilitating your conversation. This next segment is really, really important, all of it, but it's your opportunity, the five of you, the board, to decide and chart and talk about, reflect on. What do you want, what do you need from your superintendent to be most effective in your role? Because this relationship is a two-way. Cheryl is going to work on what she needs from the board to be most successful in her role. Think of bullet point, right? Then the board has an additional chart, and that is what you need from each other to be most effective. Because you need to be able to be candid on one another. And you need each other to be able to be a good, fine, fine functioning board. Okay, so when you're ready, the board is going to be in that corner. Sorry, there's been a lot of wrong phrase. So if you want to move it to the other room, that's where we move the chart. And Cheryl, we are going to be right here. I think you may have enough room. But again, if you need to take the chart paper or wherever there is more room, let's spend about fifteen minutes. And if you need more time, you can come back through and we adjust the time.
So our question is, what do we need from the superintendent?
And the titles are right. Sure, so take your chart here. That's fine. Then you have more, more space.
Do you want me to turn?
And then you, 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 um, presented like the board to the suit and vice versa, and you can ask questions. So bring your marker. Who's taking up?
I'll show you now, but get ready.
Oh, let's see if we're good.
Better than teachers.
My hand ready, sorry, but I'm a good spent.
About elementary school.
But I mean, I was with people that, you know, beat me up.
At high school, beat you.
At high school, at high school, and you know, golf.
Like a whole Lino me attitude.
Oh, I carried a yardstick because I was pregnant. I was pregnant and some of my girls were pregnant, so I carried a yardstick. That's how I broke up fights. It was great. That was the best job I had.
Yeah.
May I have two minutes? It looks like you're escaping. Or are you working?
Absolutely.
They're still doing alumni group, that's for the second time.
Okay.
And I don't know how much information you want from them or where there's, um, did you ever work with Marco Gonzalez?
I haven't.
Okay, so Marco was a, I forget what the title was. That he worked, but anyway, they are capable people. I fit in their shadow, you know? And they're all seventy. Call me mister. I can't remember. They wanna know the enormity of task in terms of digitizing. And I have not really been able to explain to them that things are being moved in stages. So that there really isn't all in one place yet. And I know some of them came over and visited you. That would have been Eric. I don't know what else came with, with Eric, but. So they're trying to figure out where it can all be moved to, where there will be tables and where there will be people who will go to and say, hey, this is no good. Forget this. And yes, this is important. Yeah, yeah, yeah. My concern, well, I've, you don't need to, you don't need to record any of this. But the principal really has given me.
This might be a mic for this meeting.
The principal is really limited, so.
We'll help her.
Right. Yeah, sorry, last year, twenty-four. Don't talk to me. She has some myth about. So I'm saying, okay, my sixteen year decision, I seem right. Right there, so I'm like, this is, no. So I was sort of charged with a goal. First time yesterday. So I, I live like ten or twelve boxes to the end of five oh three. And then everything in five oh three, I'm there. So anyway, what I'm saying, somehow I understand. And every time I talk to somebody, they'll say, well, they talked, but someone's talking. So we're gonna take that word. So, and then, uh, as I'm guys, he said, well, don't go to Melville. Talk to you and I'll say, wait a minute, Melville's the name, so it's a time for, but, you know. Or you know, kind of. But that'd be very appealing, I think, just right now.
Okay, I'll, thank you. So I am gonna go over to the cabinet to the superintendent. But I'll follow up. And then, um, kind of see. How either all of you shall do.
And I said, it's all in the front room there, right?
Yeah, the thing, once, yeah, yeah, we can, yeah.
Cause all the real groups, also.
Sometimes it's kind of. Right, so we as the board, everybody has, we have. That the board has tried. So I understand that, that we will not sit down with stuff. But it opens to the pain of the union. On these are our expectations, and this will be. And forward to the other, like, I might not be.
So, yeah. Uh, and that's all.
And I read that right, and then hopefully all the events that are happening, there are lots of devices. And then we find out, okay, let's play the event.
Oh, thank you. Feel the door. I would like to be a little bit, but I like them a little bit, or something felt of maybe just too much. Like I talked about her, but I was very clear in the. And that's why I have to say that too. I didn't elect it when you were there, only government was to let me know. Put on a grant on a, on a macro level, I was like, I wouldn't go anymore. Like I, I'm a new one for a little friend. I wanna know the story. It's one of those things that I, you know, was, 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 I got to share comments, but I knew where it was. Really was, that I'm not, because it's huge, it's huge. I knew that, that was it, but it was fast. But I was a, one, one word, but I was. She was like, I think that, I think that. Because then one is. It has, it can break, but I'm talking maybe a lot of things. Yes, share your opinion, kind of, but I don't need to know the tour, but I need to know the, the, the event. Yeah, so you. If there are events that the board is being, the district is being represented, I would like to know. And then I mean, I have to show up or I will show up, but I would like to know, because I wasn't always home for them, but, but I don't like yours. Right? Not that it came from, for the two things they talked, but I'm thrilled, but. I wanna know, how you know about all these things that happened? And I, I'm a stalker, I've been answering my question, I'm a stalker, I will do this or that. And I, and I stalked the. And then all of a sudden, I don't know what's going on anymore. The event is P O C D, it's on the calendar. And then all of a sudden, there's basically one link, and I was like, where is it? So I, that's what I'm doing. So I was like, I can't find it. So he, he answered the question, I don't know, a lot of stuff, I miss something, I miss something. One, I saw every school face with face. I am on their Facebook page, so when they told something, I figured after a long after. Two, I asked my friends, oh, my, consider my folks very much. Give your school founder with me, that's something that you walk with, and I should know, I know you're visiting, that's what they go to break down. I can show up, that's, that's, but the third way, I was having these relationships. And they were texting you, like, whatever, come into, or you're coming, hey, why you see? But I say, you can't understand, you found it out, and found it out, and that's really what. But I could go like T D, like, what's your T D? Oh, almost all. Like the, the, for the, I think, I didn't, the medicine names, all that, which is. I don't know, I wonder if I would, I would show up. He couldn't, you're, the whole thing, you know, I didn't want to, so I'll, he was about, it's not just to insert myself, and he like, I wanted Michael, I didn't want to, to see, and so, and he, or outside of part, it's, 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 he said, he take care of everything. And then I think it was that, like, those, you know, as, you know, the fellow is not like, you know, I, I, I do all. And I've done that, I was, right? And, but I, I think, we have, we don't have, or, 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 I think, you know, they, they, they don't, like, show up. But I think even, like, that, like, to, 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 even if we don't have. To be able to, like, there's, yeah. But I did a few, because I think that one of the hardest, the, the, the is, speak and obviously have a, a business. Which was free to rent in the rest, but we, I have a chat, like, actually, we, 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 or, we have a feedback there, right? Like, I go to class, and I just, you know, some of them are great teachers, and there is, there's an area, it's like, you, so I hear it. And then, like, another good run of tournaments, and all these teachers were there, and our tournament, everybody, they, and all the work, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm, see, this thing, everybody that's going, I was, we was there. Like, both things, I really need to answer ourselves. This, this, I called it out, and then like, what, for, for, I think, a lot of it falls on, Jason. They did, and it's all a lack of, they don't have anything. And then everybody go back, and they put this, we can't hope they will help us, because we don't. So it's that thing, it's a, you're, one of the little photographs that, something to do with that, that.
And it is the people of the body, because they don't hate. And having that we have fun with, like you said, sometimes these words, uh, they was, uh, they need to be, uh, because we're taking them away from thinking the other stuff that everything happens. And then, uh, we can't hold them all, we're holding them to them in the right. And they have to know that it's okay, so we correct them. And when we go straight, we go to the, you know, and I think that's an average, I don't know, after, because they should go into it after my own, I explained it before, but I think maybe for, what I thought.
We're a new type of function.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna change it. So, I'm just gonna change it. But, um, I want to put each other on the walk through. We're, you know, I think we're going to do that very well. We're gonna get, we're gonna talk. I'm very good. Uh, I did some work through the, uh, uh, a little bit, uh, one, one of the tasks. Excellent, that's a good thing. And I went up there, and we were talking, so, uh, I was thinking, uh, one hundred percent, well, I knew, and, uh, you know, it was about, uh, that, uh, the population, the, uh, the, uh, the senior, the, uh, which, uh, it was, uh, it was good, and there's good, and then seeing what, uh, I am with at that level, it really think you as well, so it is good for, it's good, and, um, children will keep you, uh, well, all those things are all. Um, I also, um, following, um, you said, uh, going to school, finding a sentence or a sentence, to the south, pop. And you know what things are done, and you still know that you're in the street, developed, or what, it will be dark, or a half, or, you know, like, like some sort of preparation, or something, but, you know, I, you're first, and, uh, everything, uh, oh, I hear, that was me.
That's what I'm telling you.
But, uh, I don't know, maybe, maybe, I, 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 um, you have, uh, I don't know, there's a study, but I don't know, you're, uh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna begin that, or it makes some fire, or that's more like, uh, certain, uh, or, or, yeah, we're, 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 uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, uh, she's, uh, yeah, uh, uh, the, the, uh, but, uh, I go this, uh, and, uh, she will, uh, uh, uh.
I think that they remain to my most, uh, uh.
Yeah, please, uh, 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 uh. Or, I don't know, to, uh, like, what are we doing, uh, and, 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 uh, but, just, uh, here, here, uh, if you're another, uh, shouldn't they, uh, 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 it's, uh, a lot of, uh, the community, yeah, but this practice, and, uh, you have, um, it's, uh, it's, uh, and gather part of the calendar, and, you know, you don't, you don't, you are, any questions, or nothing to ask. And together, talk about your family, talk about the neighborhood, and, um, connect, and, uh, that's what we do. But treat it as an appointment, and you cannot go for one week, it has to be the same thing, uh, but that's not for our kids.
It is, it is, it is. It is not, uh, uh, uh.
So that's it, I don't know what I have to say.
And I'm beginning to, uh,
Well, if you have the last question.
Yeah, one of the ways to kind of take it off is like swear to someone, I'll have a lot of do that with. A lot of talk every now and then whether it's one you have a good and we're we're putting it in the box. It's not by logic.
And why have questions, especially when you're newer, maybe you did that through some other other children that you've got in here longer. I thought this thing on the fence, right, that has probably been part of me. What else can we mark that?
All right, I'm sorry, so that would be again. Three of them, so I turned it on, or you just get a little drive, because everybody goes to the front of the garage. Uh, you're very different than they may have scored.
I think that's one to follow, and I think, and sort of my. So any of the right places, it is heavy that I have one person give us a question. Yeah, for me, the trigger can feel like there's a vibe within, and I don't want to be a coach. But I want everybody to have to be in a person, maybe treat it as a message, or what you should have heard about the rule subject. But I had some pretty much, and included moving has altered from the whole event was kind of a fair fight. That, you know, and share those with the board partners, who does that, if I won't start the organization out there. And that's just, it's talking for a whole time, and I'm just learning that, that, but you're no bit. My, but it hasn't been, I've been aside, whatnot, and like that. But like, I don't want to talk about, then we'll be in the.
Okay, I kind of love, um, those, you know, there's. Um, right, there, there will be times to start, and then spend a couple of. Then, because it's really, it's really, it's still. So, but I don't want to control very nice, uh, the whole day, like, uh, change of states concerning them. But I, but I acknowledge my level, so it's kind of more than, and now it was, I'm thinking, I would make a lot of choices. Um, and completely, yeah, there, and call these places, so if you had them, they're real, so, I don't want that, so. But, more than, I feel, it's a opportunity to the house, so, there was all of them, yeah, and two. I had two, I had two, I didn't want to. But, um, yeah, so why do you? I, I didn't have. You thought it was weird. But it's not going to take support, all the work, but. Right, and, and, and.
It's all that, so we then we stand, uh, the possibility of. It's a possibility.
First of all, I like you that.
It's, you know, it's.
There's.
Right. We'll share it, but rather, you know, I, where you're in a food bar, but we're not sure, vacation before Christmas, right?
I don't, I don't, if I were my own, but I, I was, I was, I was up here. So, 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 I mean, I, I, I'm gonna go up here, like, after me, I started off, you know, so, you told me my year, he, you know, I live in. Cool, I'm not here, um, because they're, but I hope we're here, and, and that is because it stands that I would like to have. And, uh, and then, I'm very, open, dirty, uh, from the last, no, correct, not like, you know, or. Where did you go to the end of the, right, you're in a bar, and you're in the, from the end of the, and so, and they said, I'm not here down. So, um, which is what, where, so value, you're right, um, everybody, incident, that's right, so, in one of the, I don't, from this area, you know, shit, you say that at all. Because I think that I can, with, 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 and, and, or, uh, the first evidence, and, and, I live out of board room. And, I mean, my, my, my word is on, and the president's, I don't care, I don't care, and I don't need a gun, you don't have. But, and this, 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 this. I don't, well, I don't, I personally don't do well, real life, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Community.
But I don't.
Very few, very few. He's just, I'm just, I'm. There you are, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't. But then you do my. This is like, oh, we're not, we're fine today, but it's always one of those things that I think that I need to hide, and by, you know, I have a friend, I have. Well, yeah, that's, that's, you know, you are, so, I did, and, uh, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm. I feel like I'm. He gave.
So the whole area will go home in a minute. And then I can send you the same thing that I would.
So that would be very hard. That year where he was kind of a good. So full of the.
In that work.
Yeah, so this is hard.
Yeah, so we're. Okay.
Anytime.
Anytime. I can show you also something on on my laptop.
So much trouble.
Okay. Alright, so take your tickets like to script for it. And I want you to have a picture.
He said I got no authority. He said unless you want me to start taking. Are you gonna let that?
No.
It's so important on this. I'm gonna call it by still hold on. I don't know, well, my son has.
Alright, so you're doing it, just sitting here in a stretch right and then give us.
Oh, I called it wrong.
You don't see it.
Come on, it's not kind of my go manager.
Are you gonna come this way? Tonight here.
No, well, alright, it's your day. It's your.
Wait, swap, swap, so. Understanding first.
Yes. Um, I think. And you can. And for. Yeah. Alright. Yeah. So there's some sound. The good idea of what we have for the rest of them together.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Because it's that like we know what we have left.
Yeah. Cause I don't know.
It's a dilemma. That was so hard. And you can look at this conversation, it's really more than that. You're glad that.
You're ready.
I'm not sick. I am not sick.
If I get sick instead.
I am not sick.
Look like you're done.
Should I write bowling and?
Tell me.
But there's.
I I can make more.
No, don't. If they.
So it should be a, it should be a key.
With you.
I'm fully. No, no, no. We need a. And I stuck the.
I'll take it. Are we sorry?
I like sitting next to.
Thanks for bringing.
Also enhance it. You want to back your hands and go.
It's not like.
Oh, and I have to bring my hands.
What?
It's.
If you want to.
It'll work.
Well, yeah, I'm more than happy to make you more.
Oh, no, no. I'm good.
I'm interested in everybody.
So sooner than later, it's very important to me.
Oh, okay. Whenever we do any type of.
It's it's there. It has to have something.
It's like, like, what was your coming self? Happy, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So was a.
I suppose you put yourself.
What should present as your family, what should present as your community, and what should.
And I bring it out today, not jokes, the morning quick, yeah.
I only have one a day, but it's like four, you know, like.
I remember, yeah.
I grew like a high test.
The board gets a nine star.
Were you not?
Alright, let's get started.
I am, yeah. I will, I'm also like matching like what we wrote.
Great, watch your face. Alright, let's see. We all here? Perfect, let's continue on. I hope that the format is good. I hope that you're really getting some. Resolve and and some uh taking some meaning away from all these conversations. Let's go ahead and have the board share with Cheryl what it is you need. From her to be able to do your role most effectively. And where is your?
Would you guys like me to share?
Yeah. Can you see it or should?
The only reason is because I don't know if you guys can actually read my hand.
Yeah, see, but then.
You can't see?
No, but I can't see. It's just, it's okay.
Put it on this, I know it's like.
I'm right next to her, the old lady.
Where?
Right there.
Over there.
Actually, yeah.
Are you gonna be able to see it right behind you?
If it's here?
Mm hmm. Okay. Yeah, we need, we need you to stand up and see it. We know excuse me.
Can I use the old lady?
Never saw it. I never saw it. No, no, babe.
I was like, can I use the old lady? Alright.
Alright.
So go ahead and and share.
So we spent most, like a majority of our time talking about communication. Uh which we we believe is like a big part of how we can make, you know, our job more efficient. Uh so one, uh we talked about responses from you, um whether it's email or text. First, we, I wrote within twenty four hours, then we took that off. And we said that we would actually um in the email that you know, if something that you need to be urgently known. That we would let you know, hey, could you please respond to this issue within twenty four hours or let me know? Like in case we're going to an event or we need to respond to a parent. Um and if not, if we don't, if we're not specific that uh obviously we just expect you to respond. Um but you might have more grace on that response, right? Because we know that you also have to potentially find out information and look up and. Uh but it's also just important, the follow through, right? Especially if we bring up an issue. Uh and I know I'm gonna jump around, but like, for example, if we were to do a site visit. And we send you like a summary of like, hey, this is what we saw, Miss there. Um that you're able to share with us, like the follow through that happened on the issues that we brought up. Um later on, okay? Um so just like a respond to commute to things that we send you. Um or I will get back to you in a week or two after researching, wherever, just that we got a response. Um keeping the five of us in the loop. So if one of the board members brings something up to you, for example, there's like this fire Kennedy, where I found this out. Um that then you will send it to the rest of the board. A board member brought this up to me, here are the response that I sent them. Uh doesn't necessarily need to be on everything, but just on things that we consider to be. Big issues that we should all know about, and that could also be through the Friday memo. Um because we have felt in the past that Friday memo was just more of like. These are like nice things that happen in the district. But we wanna make it more efficient and more valuable to the board. And that might include, like, whenever you respond to something to a board member. Uh that was really important. Does that make sense? Can I do justice to that piece? You have a specific question? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I think you, I think you did a great job.
Okay, sorry, you looked confused. That's why I asked that, because I'm I I'm making sense.
You said Friday memo, I think that that is helpful. I think that. I'm wondering how do we define? Because you guys send me lots of things.
Okay.
So like what, how do you define that? And I don't want one board member to say, well, I sent you this, I didn't see the follow up on it. Or it wasn't sent to the group, like we had the. I keep going after the bus pass, I've been uh going on with my staff about the bus pass thing, right? So the bus pass issue, that wouldn't go here. That would, does that considered a large enough issue raise? Like what?
For example, I think like the, like, you know, follow following the.
Because it wasn't a large enough issue, right? But I mean, I'm I'm just using as example.
Well, following the board meeting, because this is public, right? When we have teachers come and talk about a big issue at Kennedy.
Uh huh.
Right of the AP issue. Uh I've emailed you directly and was like, hey, could you send me more information?
Hmm.
Right? That I think would be good for everybody to know, right? Because it was, you know, in public, they came to ask us, right? Now, maybe the bus pass not necessarily like, because.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Can I? This is a communication, this is the dialogue. Okay. I don't know if I was listening. If it's something that you want the group to know, can you say that? So that I am not guessing.
I mean, I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that?
I think one of the things for me is like, so through line issues that have policy attached to them, because we have a bus pass policy, right? There's what we do with bus passing. If I don't even know the specific issue. The response, I like the response to everybody, because then I know, oh, this is the policy. Because it's probably gonna come up in some way, or I should know about what's our bus pass policy. But me and you guys in conversation, I'm a needy girlfriend. I like a lot of the application, right? But I also like to know stuff, like I like to be in the know. So if I'm out and they say. Thank you for resolving the bus pass, issue, whatever it was. I would have, okay, yeah, that was when something happened at Kennedy, and then now this is solved, and I get the. But that's just one board member. If that's not the will of the board, then it's not the will of the board. I'll build a bridge and get over. But for me, it's like, I wanna make sure that. I have some level of understanding of the happenings. Around. So one of the things that, and I know that you're probably gonna get to it, one of the things that we talked about is if a board member asks a question, that the answer goes to everybody. So then we.
That, so you want that as a, as a norm? So not in a Friday memo?
Is that what you wanted to do there?
I don't think we agreed on that.
So here, can I show? Practice on that, like when there is a question about the agenda?
About the dress down?
The agenda is different, though.
Different.
They're just good to everyone.
If we're just asking a question, so. Doctor Cotton, I had someone link up to me that there's an issue at Mount Calvin with special ed. Right? Would Doctor Cotton then send that answer just back to me? Because Mount Calvin is in my area, or would Doctor Cotton send that message out to everybody? Hey, we had an issue at Mount Calvin, but it's resolved because we have special ed doing X, Y, Z. Part of our policy is that we raise and ensure that special ed has coverage because of the IEP and the risk attached. When she send that to everybody, or is that just coming back to me? That I guess is my, like, what, do you have a?
That's what I would, that's what I.
I think that we should just all make that 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 decision.
Yeah, it would be helpful for us to be consistent.
Right.
Right, or so make the expectation end just to be clear, and then I can make that expectation.
So maybe that's something we need to decide on now as a board, three or more of us need to agree that there's. It sounds like there's two pathways. A board member asks a question. Whatever that question is, a board member asks a question. The response can either be back to that board member, or the response can be back to the entire board, you're saying.
I I think it should just be up to the individual, individuals and superintendent. I trust you all that if you think it's a big enough issue for me to know. That you let her know, please let the rest of the board know of the outcome over this issue. And I trust her enough to say, should this go to the full board? Yeah, right, like, but if it's like a question of like, hey, like. I don't know, I saw this issue at Murphy, like, would you let Melissa know? Right, like, I don't expect her to, I I wouldn't expect her to let you all know, hey, a board member brought this up to me. Because I think that would be a lot of work on her every time. Um I think that we should just be, in my opinion, you guys could say.
Well, that is a lot of work, and and I need you to be mindful about. Her time and staff time. Because responding to a question and taking care of comments and questions that are coming from you is not the only. They're not the only issues that a superintendent is managing, right? Especially a district your size. So being really mindful, if you need to know something, I always say, put that in. One of the three buckets, essential for the decision making, important or nice to know. The nice to knows or even important ones can be discussed at your one on ones. You should all have consistent one on one, so then questions come up. She can update you on, update on questions that you had asked. And that's the time that you have together, so then it eliminates also a lot of emails, a lot of calls and tests, right? Keep those one on ones on a regular basis, do not reschedule them, even if you feel like you have no questions. Me too, oh, connect, yes.
And I'm thinking finding a medium between us need to know, and us, we don't wanna know. Like, could we take advantage of like those, like you said, one on ones? And establishing that with her, you know, with Cheryl saying, hey, guess what, I need to know everything, so. If something happened in the metro, Leslie, Cynthia's area. That feel that could pertain, especially when we have a crossover, because I think like the bus testing. I brought it up to you, but it was in your area. So just kind of like those things where it's like we have to ju- just for reference, I don't. And maybe like I said, a one on one. Uh I think in our. And our one on one, you could be like, hey, Lupe, like, you know, there there was something like. And maybe even like, remember we had the conversation that you were like, oh, we're speaking at the church. Uh when you were speaking, so just kind of like those. Not official, like that messaging to everyone, I think. But we could start that, I think, protocol within our own one on ones. Uh just to be more efficient, I think, because I think.
Help you.
We have, I and I'm just saying, because I know we have board members who are like, we don't need to know nothing. And I.
But I also think it needs to be like, so to the metro's point, I don't distrust you, right? It's not a you issue, it's not that I don't, that I distrust you, I just like to know stuff. So I think what we can establish is, Lupe, if something's happening in my area, text me. Like, if there's a bus pass issue in my area, shit, I didn't know about it. Like, you know what I mean? And if it's something happening in your area, then I'll reach out and be like, yo, guess what I just? So this more of a board communication than it is more of a, maybe that's hit in the middle.
But the problem is that I don't, I I don't agree with like areas situations, right? Because with the conversation we're having, we're supposed to represent the whole district, right? So like, I think. How to communicate, but also like the importance of the issue, right? I mean, I think if you guys just wanna know something, everything, then like, I think then we should all know, right? Because then it creates inconsistency, then she has to make sure, okay, always have to forward everything to me and Lupe, but not the other.
Forward everything.
Right, like the response, but like.
Like the. It'll end up being a BCC the five, so.
Yeah.
Leslie sends me a question. I have, or I'm doing a response, I can do a BCC to everyone and move on. I can't do a. Now do a separate. It's not realistic.
Yeah, and and I think to do that. And I and I'm only. And I'm only wary of doing it that way, and I'm, I might be the, the only one out, out saying it. Is that my only concern of doing it that way is because I know that there's probably things that are easier to address. Than other concerns, and if we have the superintendent addressing five easy concerns, and we have replies to those. And we have a really hard one that she has been able to like loop around, is gonna feel like we're neglecting.
So I think let's do this, because I don't want you to spend too, too much time on it. Start with your one on ones. Write down your question, if concerns come to you that are not life, matter of life and death. Write down, bring it up with her when you have your one on one, uh unless there's something that needs her immediate attention. Okay, if there is something bigger, I think having trust in her ability to say this is big enough that everybody needs to know. But you, uh take your one on ones, use those one on ones as times to connect, to let her know how you like to be communicated with. And I think that's going to really help moving forward, and you figure out what makes sense and what also doesn't take so much of her time. Responding to each of you with different concerns.
But uh and my only thing is that as a new board member, I think we learn by hearing stuff, right? And then are able to like kind of go with guidance from, so maybe some of the direction of the other board member. So, you know, sometimes us wanting to know is not so much of like it really interesting, but you know, really. Getting that information, that that knowledge base, to then be able to like move forward on certain things, like what what are priorities, right? Like what aren't priorities, like this is how you address this thing over here, so now I know exactly how it might be addressed somewhere else. And just having that, I think, that learning curve, because I think that's a big chunk of the work that we're doing as well, like. You know, how do we know how things are toward, like maybe, and when you started prop? So I don't know if I'm gonna say that, because I am not, I am very into the.
So having your. Being new to the position, some of that can be addressed when you have your onboarding. Right, first, you didn't have, I, I get it, a lot of these are so. However, you can begin and establish that protocol of having an onboarding process for future board members. What should be included in that? You have recently formed this governance team. So you need a lot of time to still figure out how you're going to move together, right? So maybe you didn't have that onboarding protocol and process, but you can create it for future.
I I do wanna just lift up the.
No, sorry, go ahead.
I do, I do wanna lift up that you guys get a lot of texts, which is the easiest way for me to do a response. If I'm not sitting at my desk, or not on my computer with me. I'm, as information is coming in, probably get two, three, four of those a day. In terms of what the big items are that are happening around the district. So it's not that there's no communication. This question is more so around, can you email me a question, some some, a community member has brought a question to you. How do you want to deal with this? Do you want, I can do a response, I'll get back to you in twenty four hours and BCC everybody, so everybody knows. And then I can, once we get an answer, I can do another response and BCC everybody, so it's closed. I don't, adding BCCs is not time consuming. Sitting down to do a whole separate, in addition to the four or five messages that you're getting already, that are big issues that are happening across the district. Let's just keep me in context, you guys, of what, what is that big issue? Did that person bring that issue to you directly, and you're just gonna respond to that person, you give an answer and it's done? Or is it a board issue because, you know, it could be a friend of yours, who your neighbor, who's like, what happened with this? It's, it's being able to take kinds of balance. Um if we wanna try it with the BCC, that's fine. I think the one to ones are really important. And even just thirty minute one to ones, yeah, that we're able to hold on to, hold on to that time, I think will be really, would be really helpful. Okay, and we haven't had, we have them in the summer, we haven't had one to ones since school started, since August.
So that is some one thing that we wrote, we want one on ones. So I think that establishing those, perfect segue to opinion, but Cynthia, when it's.
No, I just, like, I don't know, I would just prefer to be BCC on on stuff, because like Lupe said, like, we're. I just wanna be in a known. Um if, just, I know that Doctor Moses used to do that, she would BCC all of us. And then I think it was just helpful just to know, so because they might come to you at one event, and they come to me with the same thing, and I'm like, oh, well. You know, I know the answer now, so they, I don't have to react to the question. But that's just my preference, but that's just me, but whatever the board decides. Text message is great, like I know that we talked about, if we can all be in a, in one group text message, but when we reply back to you. Yeah, we'll respond to separately. Uh I know that's worked in the past as well.
You would prefer that, because I've been doing the two, two and one, but I could do everyone and just don't respond.
I will not respond.
Can we put a green check on what we've agreed on, so we won't get into the mix of not knowing? We've all agreed on one on ones right here.
Yeah, or you decided then, did you agree on the BCC?
Yes, I think that we all agree on a one on one, I think that we agreed on the response.
I will go along with the group.
Will be just the BCC?
Yeah.
If you could.
I mean, I think that some of it is not very.
Please don't BCC the group.
Right, yeah, I think that the communicate the 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 the.
No.
The sentences are important, yeah. So.
BCC and then we'll know.
So Doctor Cotton, you would want and prefer for us to, if we're emailing you something that's. More scrandular, that we should say, you don't have to BCC everybody on this, I just, I just need to, if you can give me an answer by one of them, right? Or I think this, for us, I think this is a huge issue that maybe the board needs to. That the board needs to know about, and then that's your BCC green light layer. I think that requires us trusting each other. And I think that requires us trusting each other, like I said before, I trust you.
But this is about information, this is not, I I don't think this is about you guys holding each other accountable, this is about communication.
It's about communication, but it's in in what, and this is again a bridge that I have to get over. I have to trust my fellow board members that they're going to green light a BCC and not hold information tightly and gatekeeping. That my fellow board members are going to, that we have established what is BCC-able and what's not. So we don't put that on you, it is a standard that we hold. Hey, Kennedy was in a lockdown, this is a bad example, you can tell us anyway. But let's say, let me just use this as an example, knowing that this would not be one, Kennedy's in a lockdown, Lupe emailed you that Kennedy's in a lockdown or something that she had on Kennedy. And it's a big issue, but Lupe says, just don't BCC the board, just tell me. Like, that's me having to trust that Lupe wouldn't do that, that we have established with within our parameters as board members. Something that's gonna be on the news, we all know, something that's gonna be a through line between each. Each of our spots all over the district, we all know, right? So we have to, I think, establish that trust among us, does that make sense, or am I off to the left?
Makes sense.
Okay.
I think you're off to the left. Yeah, and the one on ones would really help, because we can have these conversations with Cheryl on what it is that you need specifically. And continue those conversations, so hold those finds. What else do you have on your list?
Okay, I'm gonna go a little quicker, uh but stop me if you wanna talk specifically about one. Um Friday memo, we want more substantial information, I just like, there's some good things happening in the district. We talked about how like, there's Friday memos on read, because I already know like it's gonna not be something really important. So we just wanna have really important information in there as well. Uh in addition, like heads ups, like I brought up an uh an example in Fairfield. Um uh every department puts in information of, for the board of like, things that might come up at the next board meeting, the public comment, right? So like, this teacher was put on admin leave, or like this happened, right? Like, um you can do a, you can do a close Friday memo, yeah. Um so obviously that would require you and your staff to say like, this part is closed, the closed memo, and this part is part of the open part of the memo. Um and then we want to know about events. Um we don't really hear, unless they're in the large district calendar. Um we don't hear about events, so we wanna get invited, invited down for just notified about site events. Um and if you're going to city council specifically, or meeting a politician in one of our schools. Uh we wanna know that specifically, so we can join you if you choose to do that. Anything that I missed on that, very quickly? Okay, any questions on that piece? Yeah.
Um, no.
Okay, 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 wait. Um.
So, so there's city council members that I know. And so those.
Including the, like, if there's city council that is coming, city council member going to one of the schools to do a walkthrough.
Yes.
We want you to do that, if if. I can't think of an example of where.
No, you'll, you'll be invited to speak at city council. I'd like to know if you're coming to the Alserina City Council.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm I'm trying to think of an example where like, it wouldn't be necessary for.
The coffee with a city council member, I don't.
Yeah.
Like that's on you, because you have your own relationship with them, right? And you're, you're going out to coffee with a city member, a city council member as Cheryl Cotton. And then, but if you're going out.
Gonna be alerted if there is a site visit.
Right.
Or district.
Right.
Yes.
And if you're going.
Or if you're speaking as, another body, yeah. Including like, maybe like a, a, a community, what's it called, or the.
I'll be at the West County Forum tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes, Thursday.
Thursday.
I mean, we already knew, I think we all get the email. But yeah, things like that, that's a good example, or if you're going to go speak out of like, the Fairmeal, Fairmeal, Fairmead. Uh community, neighborhood council, right? Those are the, I think, the events we also want to know about specifically. Uh so we might join you, actually, just to like support you, right? Like, a lot of times, really just to know that, to do that. Um.
Yeah, I think that that's a big deal, not evaluative, it's supportive.
Yeah.
Like, we wanna know that.
No, I can, I know, and yes, yes, thank you for the clarity.
Um when we do reach out to you and email you, do you want us, this is a question for you, do you want us to just email you? Or do you want us to include, like, if we have a spec question, include, for example, no, okay, just email you, do we all agree on that?
Yes.
Just the superintendent, cool. Sorry, I'm rushing, someone stopped me, but I'm really concerned. Um.
Two lists.
Yes. Yes, school walkthroughs, um, uh, we would like you to invite us to do more walkthroughs. If you're going to sites, not if you're gonna like, go and talk to a principal, right, or do like a whatever, but like, if you're gonna do an official school walkthrough. Uh, we would like to be invited to join you, so that we can do it with you, instead of just going on our own. Uh, but if we are going to go on our own, we did agree that we would notify you. If we're going, doesn't necessarily mean that we expect you to come, but sorry, I'm pointing at all of you, cause I can't remember if we did agree.
And the principal, that's part of our policy.
Uh, perfect.
Then that, so, so, that's one, that one makes me a little bit nervous, because. I've just, we just, you just asked me, there's a question, do I C C staff? And I said, no, don't C C staff, but that's the one instance where the board is reaching out directly to a principal, a site principal. And that. I don't know if that, how that aligns with the rest of our policy. And I, and it just, it still makes me a little bit hesitant. It's, 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 it's not a thing, but it's a thing, and so I just wanna put that out there.
Like, what would you like, would you like us to email you so that you let the principal know? Hey, like trustee Gonzalez was coming to your school on X and Y day, just be prepared. I might not be there with him, but be prepared, okay?
I know, it's different, then that's where my next question comes in, because, and we're only talking about official site visits, right? Or does that mean a visit in general? And I think that's where, there's a, we're talking about. At Dejawn, I support with the Coffee Club, right, the Coffee Club parents. Uh, at, you know, at Lincoln, I could go in there, you know, help with like. Playtime or, you know, some of the classrooms, right? Or just go in, because the teacher might be, hey, Lupe, I want you to come down to my class, can you just come in and help, or I want you to come see this. Like, there's different types of relationships that we form, where it's not official site visit, right?
We're on-site, so we're not, we're not visiting a site, so what does that look like? So does it look like we are letting you know in the very beginning? That, hey, I do traffic Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday at this site? And then you let the principal know that, or because we've already established that communication with the principal that we are at that site? Do we just continue under that volunteerism?
I think it's helpful to let me know, so then, so then, that question goes back to you guys. My plan is, most Fridays, I'll be in at sites. Um, quietly walking through, not formal, principal's walking with me, but I wanna go and visit classrooms. Is that what you want to be invited to every Friday?
On occasion, I'd like to go.
Yes, is it enough for me to say, I'm gonna be going out to sites, and I may not even line out where I'm going, just. That morning, I might be like, yeah, I'm gonna go here, here, and here. Is it enough for me to say, I'm going to sites on Friday? Site visits from, from eight-thirty to twelve on Friday, and if you're interested, then you would let me know.
There used to be, it used to be done two ways, so Dr. Hurst had a calendar. That he would have, he would put a date and then where he was going. And then he would have lines, and if the board member wanted to go, they would check that line, remember that? That was one way of doing it. Then there was another where he would just send out an email or a text or something in the morning and say, hey, I'm going to. King, or something like that, so I give this like.
A, not gonna be that organized, and B, I don't want, I don't want fanfare when I go, I wanna actually see classrooms. See, it's, it's just a bad one, I think.
And, and, and I think. So, that was someone, we did a, I think, we did one with Melissa, um, it was just, everybody knew it was a Friday thing. So, I mean, I don't think we specifically need to, I mean, I would just wanna do it, I, I'm thinking, how do we break that out of that. My area type of thing, so I don't need to know what schools they're doing in my area, cause that's something that we're trying to break out of. So as long as we know.
I can put it in the Friday memo. And so, this is Friday, the hour.
Yeah, as long as we know Fridays are walkthrough days, and maybe if. In our agenda, we don't have anything to do this Friday, regardless of what sites you're going to, maybe the morning, uh, because it'd be like. These are the sites that I'm going to today, or.
Why don't we just reach out to the superintendent, like, why don't we just, if, if you, if you want to go visit schools. Why don't we just text her and say, hey, I'm free this Friday, could I join you in your site visits, could you send me your schedule? I don't know what.
I'm, if I'm going, I'm going, I will put it in my Friday, cause it's on my calendar. And if something is happening that Friday that bumps, then I've gotta move it, I'll, I'll make sure that that goes on our Friday memo. So you know, we have the dates at the beginning of the Friday memo? I'll put the dates.
For the next week.
For the next week. Yep, of site visits, and then if you're interested in joining me, just.
And some of these conversations, again, take advantage of your one-on-one. Have these conversations, and then let Cheryl know if you would like to accompany her. The one thing that I'd like you to be mindful of is not to interrupt and disrupt the daily operations of a school, right? Because I'm hearing that the Friday visit is more quietly going in, just to see what's happening. And when a board member shows up, changes the, the feel of the, um, the visit.
Well, and that was, I think, one of those things that I talked to you about, when you remember when we showed up to Lincoln at different times. It's like, when I go to a site, I'm not really going to a site and visit per se, I'm just gonna go there to support, because I think I. I'm newly on the board, so I've always been a parent, and I work at a school as a volunteer on these spaces, so I think. Now being a trustee, I think that's just an extension of the work that I'm continuing to do. Uh, so it's not like, oh, I'm going there to officially be on the clock. You know, where I'm checking in at Coffee Club today, or, you know, tomorrow, sitting in on part of like, you know, the school. Climate team meeting, because, you know, I have that relationship with them, right? So, and I'm not.
Yes, and you are still a board member.
Yes.
And when you walk through the doors now at Lincoln, you're a board member, you are not. Sebastian's mom. I don't, right, I just, I don't, I favor Sebastian, but you're not that person, and they will see you, some will see you as that. But you were, whenever you walk into the schools, they're gonna see you as. The board member, so you guys get scared.
What is the difference between visiting, like, a new site, and like, you going to the site that you go to every Tuesday, right? I see that, it's a big difference, like, I know Jamila, like, is at Lupe's farm every morning from eight-thirty to nine, right, like. I, I, I'll push back if this is not what you think, but I don't think that, that she needs to tell you every day, she's gonna be there from eight-thirty to nine. Right, but if I, um, randomly, and especially for me, cause I think I do the least visits out of all of you, but. If I am randomly showing up to Murphy, even the principal would be like, why are you here, right? And I think that's gonna be different, even if I'm like, oh, I'm just here to do yard duty, because I have thirty minutes. They will see it, right, as like, oh, Demetrius here, right, or trustee Gonzalez voice here, not Demetrius, but like, I think. That's when, what I would give you a heads up on, uh, but I think for you two especially, that's gonna be the hardest, because you both volunteer the most. Um, but, uh, I, I think I, I really do see a difference between like, like a random visit to a school and like, just a volunteer, when you're volunteering, right?
Okay, go, let's move on, let's move on, we finish.
You both disagree though, I don't wanna like, shut you down though, if you guys disagree with me, cause I can tell, you both, I, I.
I don't know if I necessarily disagree, I just need to process what the next steps are gonna look like, so that I'm honoring the board agreement. Right, whatever the board agreement is, I have to honor that, because that's part of ninety-two hundred, right? That's part of what we're doing, so I'm trying to process exactly what the board and the superintendent want when it comes to. When it comes to visits, right, or when it comes to under this, cause I'm not, I'm still not quite sure, right?
So would it be helpful if you create a list of all your regular times that you're on? You let, you let Cheryl know, right, send her a list of, because you would know on which days you're doing traffic duty or whatever. And then, uh, anything else, you'll go through Cheryl if you want to visit in an official capacity. So in both cases, she knows, for the regular stuff, you already make a list, she knows, you can talk about it, that you're one-on-ones. And the rest of it, you let her know if you want to accompany her, if you want a site visit, and you'll, you'll, uh.
And then what about that, what about that middle category? So the middle category means, I just got a text message that says, hey, can you work the book fair next Friday? I just got a text message that said, hey, can you do, can you volunteer for the concession stand on Friday night at Hercules High School? Right, those are the next couple of things. So I would then email or text Dr. Cotton and be like, hey, these are the next, these are the things that I've been asked to do on sites. That's what, that's, is that the agreement that we have, so then I'll know, so there's three buckets here.
Yeah.
I think it's so cool that you get invited to do that, I'm a little jealous of it. Um, okay. Um, okay, so we will hold your, the expectations that you hold yourself accountable, right? I mean, I think that you know that, you know, that's a big piece that we've talked to you about before, like, if there's like, a mistake that is done, like. Depending on the mistake, like, we expect to hold them accountable, right? Um, and so, your staff should be consistent with the board, right? If, if, yeah, let, let me, and you guys add to this if I don't explain it correctly, cause I can't remember. We'll write it up, but, like, um, if, let's say I have a conversation with one of your cabinet members. Uh, and they respond, they're all very nice and wanna be responsive to the board, but like, they respond to me and like, yeah, let me get you. I'm gonna pick on Jamila and Melissa, let me get you that shade for your school, right? Uh, but then turn around to trustee Ananas and says, sorry, it's too expensive for your school, right? Now, this is a very made-up example, very huge, but like, uh, like inconsistent, inconsistent response. Per board member, and then that could be because of the position that they hold, or because how much they bother that cabinet member, or. You know, it could lead to, whatever the inconsistency is leading to, please help me, because this is not brought up by me.
I think the inconsistency came up to also, you know, us not wanting to pressure, or. We work with each other, right, some of us, we've, I think, I've been here many, many years. So we've established relationships outside, uh, the trustee, uh, era. Because we work personally with each other in different areas, so our whole thing is. You know, we want to also set up a system to where staff doesn't feel obligated. Being asked by a trustee, because we have a relationship, right? Like, oh, let me just do this really quickly, because I have a relationship and, you know, gonna get this done really quick. Like, going, having them go outside of their way when we shouldn't be directing staff. That's what it is, like, we shouldn't be directing staff, but that also is gonna take training for staff to be like, hey, you know. You should just, you know, talk to Cheryl about this, and, you know, have her start redirecting. I think some of our concerns and actors, like, having off-staff kind of redirect us, I think they have points, because. I think that's gonna be really important, that if we go up and it's like, hey, I need you to do X, Y, and Z for me. And some are really tentative, because we've built that relationship, but having them be like, okay, we're setting up new systems, you know. We've been asked by superintendents, you know, that everything be.
They're not gonna do that, if, if, if the trustee approaches them and says, I need you to, they, they will be like, oh.
And I think the hardness of that is that some trustees feel that they haven't established those relationships. While others feel very, very comfortable, right?
So, uh, so, then it, it needs to be in agreement with us, that we don't do a reach out to. That we do not do a reach out directly to any staff at the beginning of the year. And that's. Because it is gonna lead to inconsistency. They're, they're your support, they're, you're, they're boss's boss, or boss's 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 boss. And when you call, they're your subordinate, and they're, not that I wanna put that in. But I'm your subordinate, right, so, well, and we're partners, it's weird, but, but. I would be really careful, because they can't tell you, they, they will not redirect you.
And I, and I like your answer, and I'm gonna tell you exactly why, because I think that also. Is holding us accountable, right, cause I think some of these things are asked that we're putting on you. Uh, just say, okay, Cheryl, make sure that they're doing this, they're doing that. But I think it's also, you know, your answer's really great, to where like, we're holding each other accountable. To like, I know that this is an issue with some of my fellow trustees, so I'm not gonna do this. And I'm gonna always try to go through the superintendent, because we need to establish that trust within our board. And that's what is our social accountable, so thank you for that.
That was a text.
You guys agree. You guys agree with me. But it was more on holding staff accountable. Uh, no surprises, we wanna go deeper about that from cabinet or the sites. So then, um, I think that there has to be more communication for the one-on-ones, more communication for the Friday memo, right? On issues from every department, um, to give us heads up, right, like, heads up, it's an issue happening at a school. Heads up, it's an issue happening in a store, right, so, whatever. Uh, obviously, we wanna get more information, so that we never get surprised, plus, I don't think you like to get surprised, right, so.
Every day.
Yes. But you know what we mean by that, there's no surprises, um, especially obviously at board meetings, right? Um, substantive changes need to come to the board. Um, I think that we, obviously, we need to dig a little deeper on what a substantive mean. But like, there, if there's a, a district-wide change on something, we would like to be part of that decision before it's made. Um, so let's talk, let's take a quick example that isn't known publicly, like, for example, the change on SPED that happened this spring. Those should have come to the board, uh, and we should have had a conversation about it. Um, so, so I think that like, if there's something that's gonna change district-wide, that you know. We're gonna be asked about, and that potentially could be problematic for some people, we wanna make those choices, those decisions with you, um, at least in consultation.
So, I, I wanna just, just, and we'll go up to my, my list.
Yeah.
If it's a policy-related issue. Absolutely. If it's not a change in board policy, and it is. It is. An administrative decision that's made. It would not be a decision, so that, that kind of goes, the, the watered-down brochure, that was a conversation that we had around ARs. And ARs are not something that's more, more.
I think it's more of like, wide program changes. Let's say that overnight, you and cabinet decide D L I is not a problem anymore, and just make that position. I would be upset not having part of that conversation. Or let's say there's a substantial change in the way that we incorporate I E Ps and the way that we do them. Like, I would have said that I was not consulted, because so many of them might be really important to me and our community, right? I think those are the things that we're talking about, we're not talking about like. I can't think of small, it's a small change.
I, it's following the law, right?
Right.
And so, if it's something that is, the things that are, that the board. Approves, makes decisions on, moves forward, are things that are in board policy or within the law. If it's not those things, and it's an administrative decision, you're asking to be informed of those? Or you wanna make a decision about those?
I think we wanna be consulted at the, at the, at the.
What do you mean by consulted?
So I, let's say the D L I example, we would want to be decision-makers on that. Um, am I, am I going off, off, like, do you guys not agree? I think like.
I, we have to agree, like, this brings us back to the whole Kennedy. Issue being brought to the board about the A P classes, right? It, it caught me off guard, I'm not saying like, like, tell us like, I'm not, to me personally, I'm not. Saying, bring it to me, so I can decide if there's gonna be an A P class or not, I'm just saying the notification. So when people come up to the board and say, well, it's the board that decided this, and we're like, what? What are you talking about, like?
I was deeply, I was, I was informed from what you guys knew, that's when I learned of that as well.
So it's just, to me, that's, I, I just don't wanna be caught off guard, or just, like, to me, just those is. Decisions that you as the leader of this district are gonna make, or. It just like, the example of the D L I, like, those big program decisions, like, of removing a program, um, getting rid of. I was gonna say Vista, uh, the, uh, very, very, Vista Virtual. Like, all of those, the, the virtual school, or even the, the big changes that happened with SPED that were made. That families were really upset because of the lack of communication. That families were really upset because of the lack of communication around it. Like big changes when it comes to programming. I don't know if the board agrees or not of of that. Because at the end of the day, our constituents, the district, the staff, not staff, the our stakeholders come to us. And they said, well, you did this and we're like, what? And that's how I feel. I don't know if I'm wrong. If it's not allowed. Um, as a new board member, I just wanna be informed and like Dimitro said, consultant. It's it's not that we're gonna make the ultimate decision, but I wouldn't have partnership. Let's talk about it. Let's move forward. What's gonna be best for the district?
That's helpful.
And I think there are some other examples. This goes back a while. I ready testing system. We ditched Renaissance. We went to, you didn't do it, but you know, I ready. Presentation, we changed a lot of things. We're also now spending a lot of money. I mean, there were some implications beyond just. Um, taking in new testing system. There was more testing. There, you know, like, like, and I think it helped, it may eventually help the district too if everybody understands, okay. We're moving this way. This is why we're moving this way. This is benefits we think we're gonna get permitted or, you know, so I think that there are some things that. Some rather big things that have happened that could have come forward and would have been interesting and informative. You may have gotten some points of view. Um, you know, so it is a give and take. It's not written, you know, some of these, obviously, some of these things aren't written. Some of these things are board priorities. The board has to put a snake in the ground. We're gonna support DLI. And, you know, we're gonna believe in this program. You figure out how to do it. Um, you know, like, so there's some. You know, gray area here that needs to get sorted.
But I know, I know with my whole time, I do wanna. The like one here, it's come up in this conversation as well. I'm interested in a DLI work group to figure out exactly what we're doing around DLI. We have. Yes, and. I think I want, we can either go through that group, there's a, that's a, the DLI pact, the new pact, right? Or whatever, we need to come together and actually just gonna pull some principles together and have a conversation. It's figuring out, this is just a quick blurb and we'll talk more about it. But figuring out, when I left, there were three DLI programs, three true dual language immersion programs. When I came back, there's nine. And I I would say probably six of those nine are not really DLI programs. They're they're TVE programs. And so we do need to have that conversation. We do need to have kind of more of a a community forum, public conversation. And do you wanna start with our principals and and get a sense from them what they're doing, what they have and what they don't have and what these programs are? We need to make that, start making that, those moves and have those conversations this year. So I know you're looking at expanding, but it's like, before we can expand, let's assess what we have because we've got. Really three true DLI programs, Washington Mandarin and Stewart, Stewart is living along with their few children.
Yeah.
Washington's okay and we're super strong, but they're like, okay, Mandarin is really strong. And so how do we build up those two? If the program decided those are the sites that we wanna build those these programs. That's the energy that we're putting into or it happens somewhere else and then making a decision and move forward. Those are not, so that could go on a Friday memo to you guys. So that's, um, yeah, we need to beef up our Friday memo so that some of those conversations. Are getting lifted up in those steps. So I'm trying to use and visiting structures that it fits.
But it could also be a priority, figure this out and come back with a plan or do an assessment. Inform the board, you know, you know, so it can be a a touch point that the board believes in and. It can tie into the strategic plan of whether it's under global competence or, you know, like whatever we decide to do, you know, we can. You know, I'm talking about structures and, you know, it's it's structure.
It'd be in, um, within our structures that we.
Yeah. Okay, I'm coming over here. You guys did that. Anything else on on that? Cause I think that was really good.
Are we wrapping at three or wrapping?
Well, I want us to spend the the last thirty minutes on the goal areas.
Okay.
So.
All right. Are you guys ready?
Come closer if you need to, maybe just pull up closer.
I'll stop. Okay, you bullets, um, what the superintendent needs from the board to be most effective within my role. Um, number one, understand that the scope of the role of the superintendency. And understanding, I need you to understand the scope of the role of the superintendency. And while I am the board's sole employee, I am your touch point. I'm responsible for four thousand employees and twenty five thousand, four thousand employees and twenty five thousand students every single day. And every day. So I just wanna like, under, I need you guys to understand the scope. So like when we had the earlier conversation, well, just email all of us and email this and. This still happens every single day and all day long. Not an excuse, but just understanding the scope. Um, the board president and superintendent, and I put these out here for discussion, right? Okay. The board president and superintendent represent the district in communications with the media. Uh, media inquiries are reported to the superintendent. So somebody reaches out and says, hey, reporter from wherever says, hey. We wanna do a story. Can we talk? It would go, let me know. The board president or myself would serve as that voice. You are free to speak as a student, as a student, sorry, as an individual. But you would not be speaking to the media as a board member. Yes.
I do have an issue on that one. I wanna talk about it. Uh, I definitely understand, obviously, the board president represents us. I agree, she represents the media.
This is, this was in the handbook.
Um, and you know, Leslie and I wrote that together, um, and I think that what I would, what I would now ask would be of you and Leslie. Would be that when you speak to the media and you say, I am speaking on behalf of the board. And this was the decision that was said by the board. Because I think a lot of the time they quote Leslie as an individual board member. So then I feel like I have to also talk to them to hear my perspective. So then. I my always preference is not to talk to the media, but I've felt that way because. Leslie, they quote you as an individual trustee. So if they could quote, if they could quote you and speak on behalf of the board on decisions that we've agreed. Then I think that I would feel different about that, right? Um, and I don't know how we can maybe. Impress that to the media. Uh, obviously you can make, you know, your own comment individually, but I'm fine with that, but like, uh. If they want the board comment, I'm comfortable with you, but like, if it's explicitly said. Uh, like on behalf of the board, this is what. You know, President Netflix shared, so. Does that make sense?
Anything else on that?
You know, just know that they quote from the board meetings. They take quotes that were said in public in the board meetings.
And we've, we've already talked about this, you guys. I think we're on the same page. Communication from the board goes through the superintendent and not to employees directly.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, it's been held on all day. Communication from the board goes through the superintendent and not to employees directly. We've talked, had a long conversation about that. So we're good. Um, information about district events is available on the big calendar on Parent Square and on the district website. Hint, 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 hint. So. We will do a a dump. Uh, Rosa just lessons. We're gonna do a dump of my calendar for Friday memo. It will be listed in Friday memo.
I used to have access to the district calendar, the big one, and then all of a sudden, I was just telling them earlier. Yesterday was a CB OC meeting and it was on the calendar when I looked at it and then all of a sudden it was no longer on the calendar. It's CBOC. So I don't know if it's on my end then, it's probably my calendar's not thinking correctly. Um. So I'm not sure. We might wanna look at that. And then the district website, we still got a lot of work to do.
But as far as seeing a part of district event. Having that part of your Friday agenda, is that your Friday note, your Friday memo? You don't like me?
Yeah, but I think that would help. I think just a couple of things, things recently have. Fallen through the cracks. Also for Parent Square, I just have to say, I get some stuff from Parent Square. I'm not really sure if I'm on the a staff. Distribution or community distribution, but once again, for individual schools, I get nothing for.
Only on the district.
I know, I know even that.
So Parent Square, like I used to receive everything like site based to my event with. But once he transitioned out, then my account was blocked and now I only have access to the district. Uh, Parent Square. But not in the like district newsletter, you don't have events or anything going through that.
So site events I don't have either. So I can't share those with you.
Even like district events that we had like.
So the big calendar is supposed to speak directly to Parent Square.
Yeah. Well, okay, so we had like, so does that include, like, we had that STEM event this weekend? Like the one at Dejana on Saturday.
Is that a site?
No, that was for all elementary schools.
It wasn't on my calendar.
It wasn't on ours either, but it was. So that's one of those things that is.
Was I put out there by the site?
No, it was by the district.
It was on the district.
It was on Facebook, actually. See, those are the things. I don't check my social media frequently, so if it's just being now put on social media. Then we wouldn't have access to it.
Rachel, do you have the the, Rachel or Rosa, do you guys have the? The last weekend STEM event on your calendar? Cause it's not on mine. It was not on there. So I don't know.
They didn't put that out. You see, it's on a social media, where's Country Club for school?
Well, that's something.
Yeah, what it sounds like is there are different departments, so that may have come from our STEM scene group. That. They posted it, they didn't put on a calendar. I wasn't informed and I keep asking people. When things are coming up, put it on my calendar, invite me. I just got the football games, by the way.
Oh, I've been having that though. I've been asking since last year.
For football games?
For sports, like.
So it's just, we just need to keep track of the big calendar. Like I said. It's, there's all these meetings and stuff, like even community meetings, like the only one that usually like the the packs. The only one that's always on there is the CBOC meeting. Everything else and.
I don't think anybody has established their dates yet.
Well, I think we're just having historically from like last year.
Okay. We'll look, look into this calendar issue. I've been, yes, we've had the conversation. We were talking about the calendar. But there's things I have no idea about the STEM thing and I'm not checking social media every day.
And does that include site based? For example, Elstrid High School, they had a meet and greet for the principal. I would have loved to have just been like, hey, welcome. I didn't know.
Laurie's not here. Rosa. Rosa or Rachel? How about Rosa and Rachel? Can the, okay, so before I start doing this, tell me what you think. If we get Parent Square access for you or your trustee area. That's not. We are one, but it is your trustee area. Thoughts on that?
Like through all the schools that work in our area?
You want fifty four parent squares popping up on here?
For our area.
I would want fifty four. But that's just. I would want to know because then I could, I would either want fifty four parent squares or I would like, like what I did with. In area one is I just asked for access, right? So I asked for access to.
For the principals to put you up there.
Yeah, so cause then I could see what they're doing, but I don't show up to IOT. I don't show up to. Certain things that I know that are site based, but I would pop in. For a book fair because it's on the calendar. I do pop in for a jumpathon because it's all or a walkathon because it's on the calendar. Or I pop into something else because I can see it on their their big calendar.
Can we talk about this? And we could talk about it in our one to ones and figure out what people want, because it may be a little bit different. I.
I'm playing with that. It's just, if Coramoff has been concert once a year, I like to know.
It's not even on my calendar. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's not.
Have a conversation at your one on one.
I have that idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's figure that out.
Area thing. Be aware of what's going on because then it goes against what we're promoting, right? And if then we have to reach on that showing up to his areas school. Because he's the only one getting an indication of stuff going on over there, but we have a flexibility to do it and we're not showing up because we didn't know. Then where is that we are one this type of thing?
What does it look like from the board perspective? What does it look like from the board perspective to be? To exemplify because modeling starts at the top. What does it look like from the board perspective to model we are one, right? And does that look like having access to cross area information? Does that look like having access to district events or district information? Does that look like having access to? PTAs and PTOs and whatever does, what does it look like from the board level to be we are one? I think one of the things that we discussed in there is there in our separate room was. We don't want to continue to promote the idea that. We only take care of our area schools or our area, uh, functions like. And that's, and I know that you agree with that, like you agree with the.
I worry about what fifty four schools on your calendar is gonna look like. Yeah. And is that realistic? And I'll go in there, but that's not my worry. That's your worry.
Is that anybody in the district that keeps track of major events by school? Like not like the PTA meeting.
We're not.
Or is there a way that we can have a bulletin board? Like, you know, kind of like we do like the parking lot thing, you know, we've done like with the, okay, where we're just like. Us posting, like, I think this is something important, you know, as a trustee, right? This is an event happening in my area. Maybe you guys would like this, like somewhere where we could go to. Where there's a calendar, a board calendar that has nothing but events and maybe not overlapping or like fifty. You know, our area school, but then that we can kind of navigate on like, so what should take priority on there?
What I would love to do is not have to take responsibility for maintaining a whole board calendar.
But is there something that has access?
That worries me in terms of. Either myself or staff members. Completing that task on a regular basis and shifting dates and things.
No, I'm not saying that on a, on a date. So I think it's just more so. And I could be wrong. I don't, I don't think you guys ever were part of that process. So I remember a couple of years back. We had a Richmond calendar and I don't know if you've ever seen it, where it was a Richmond calendar. An events calendar on the website. And anybody could go on there and there was only, you could go on there and post events that you, either your organization, that you knew about. That were happening, but we did it individually. There was nobody maintaining that calendar. So if I do have an event that I would go up there and upload, hey, this day there is a fair going on at, you know, or Unity Park. It's from this time to this time.
Something that we manage because we're posting to it, but all the board has access to.
We could add a. You guys, we could create a board calendar.
Nothing that has to be.
Access to.
It's something that we can do on calendar events to, for things to that, something that the board has access to that pops up on our phone or pops up wherever. It would only be for board members to where we can let each other know. And I guess board members and the superintendents, right? So we can let each other know what's happening because we have access to what happens in our particular. Spots, right? But we want to break out of just going to our area events and we want to be able to spread that information among the board. Among the board. Some more, some more members may or may not.
No, we, we don't know how, like, I don't have access to it.
Right? So like how, so like how, I guess that's a secondary question. Those of us who have access to events that happen, how do we then tell everybody else? About it? And if one way could be to where we would upload it. To a calendar. So everybody has access to the, the Murphy parent forum that's gonna happen on.
But you would be adding like. Side event.
To the outside, to whatever we go to.
Whatever events that hit like that we as a board but want to make sure that everybody, the board and they governance team. Make sure that everybody that has access to.
If I can interrupt just for one moment, we're two fifty-nine. We're supposed to be endings.
So let's go ahead and finish your list. Oh, doesn't it go? Did I change it to three thirty?
No.
Because they, they started half an hour later.
But we didn't officially change.
Would, would we like to extend when there's soda, what time? I have a hard stop at three thirty.
Okay, yeah.
Three thirty? Okay, we'll go to this.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Okay.
So I'll move through these. And I reckon, nice. Let me share these. Alright, everyone. Gush in, we just have to do a motion and a vote.
Oh, I think we've all agreed. Have we all agreed?
You're going to three thirty?
I was just saying, we have to send the processes and follow them.
Okay, we're agreed.
Okay. Trust in guiding, so trust in, in me, in guiding the organization. And that's what staffing, administrative regulations, district procedures. Is something I need from the board. I need the board's commitment to following the agreements from the governance handbook. It sounds like everybody is, oh, we're all online right now. Um, allow me the ability to make district operation decisions that are in alignment with the board values and policies. So it's. Let me. Do my job. It's not a question.
Yes, but you're correct feedback. Substantial exchange, dude.
Inform me, you about substantial changes.
And be part of the decisions depending on those.
But that's not the role of the board. That does not align.
Yeah, depending on the topic, if it falls within.
Policy law.
Right, then yes.
I'm sorry.
But I think we can also work through it in terms of. Strategic plans and systems and structures. And I think there's room to. I'm, I'm very confident that. There could be positive arrangements. And also and be fa- and to be fair, there is going to have to be some trust building and some. You know, good communication, just not you in particular, just. There's been a lot of birth. People go birth. So, but I, I'm confident that we can do this well. With structures.
I mean, I'm sorry, I, I would do them at that person, but like. It's, it's also not about this, right? And we're saying the standard forward. So like. I think that. I have experienced, I have really bad experiences with just for them making a decision without consulting before. So. I am. I know you Cheryl and I know that's not gonna happen with us, but like. It's happened to me now with three superintendents. So like for me to trust that like. It's not gonna happen forward. It'd be a huge trusting issue. And I think that if there's something that is going to substantially change the district. I do think that I need to come to the board.
So. Can I comment on that? But now is that something that we would? Want to in, in a policy? Governance or how would we make that change? To be able to override with.
So it depends on, it really does depend on, on the situation. Because if it's connected to a policy, then that's the policy. I mean, policies are backed up with anecdotes, right? They're supported. They support anecdotes. So. If that's the case, then you have to go back to the policy and you cannot change a policy that. By law, you need to, right? So I think that's situation by situation. I think what you're really talking about goes back to the issue of trust. And the more that you spend time, the more that you create. And reestablish foundation of thought, the less of these conversations you have. I completely understand you're based on lived experiences, previous experiences, that trust is not there yet. You have trust in your superintendent as a person, but as the superintendent in that role. You have lost some of that trust because of previous experience. Is that correct? So I think given time, the more that you establish trust, those one-on-ones are really going to be critical establishing. And, and strengthening trust, it's really going to help. And then you always go back to your policies. Because they're your guiding principles, right? What's our policy on this? Cause that cannot be changed. But you need to also. Begin to really work on foundation of trust, because that's what I'm hearing. That keeps coming up.
The last two, time and grace to work your expectations with cabinet. Which will improve responsiveness to the board. And I just want the board to know. The longest standing cabinet member that I have has been in their job for two years. He's a very young cabinet. And so. Um, as we are working on kind of building our trust and getting to know each other and understanding who we are. I'm doing the exact same thing with nine other people on my cabinet. Um, and so just asking for some time and some grace. When I ask for things. They haven't, they may not come back in the way that I'm expecting them to come back. So they come back to you and that's not a matter as well. So I'm working through those things. But just to be aware before your awareness. Um, and then finally, just to add my highest priorities. So that you know our safety, our student achievement and our instructional programs. That's where. If you, you wanna know where my focus is, that's where my focus is. And so as long as those things are taken care of and I'm responding to all the other parts. But my, my main priority is student safety. Um. How they are doing in school or what they're doing. I need you to understand that.
And these are conversations you need to continue. It doesn't happen just once and then you're done. Right? This is the first time you have come together. You're going over your expectation. You need to continue. Yes. What I'd like you to do, what I'd like you to do is to, to come up with. Three main, three to four main areas that you would like to, the focus to be on. Align to the goals that you already have, align to your L cap goal. Right? So as you think of that, what's the first thing that comes to mind? All for all of you.
With our headphones?
Um, the goals that, that you would like as the governance team to focus on in the next. Couple of years or so.
Well, student achievement.
No, you're not going, so the. You don't have time to go into specifics of what that means. I think based on. Data that you have, data that your superintendent has that you have looked at. That can determine what, what the student achievement mean. Where are you now and where do you want to be? Right? What does student achievement mean to you? How does it look? And where are you now? And where do you want to be? Does that make sense? Cause that's a very, you're right. It's a very broad term, but you don't have the data or right now to say. We want to increase. Or we want to establish this program or strengthen it. We need to be able to look at that to. Uh, to be more specific.
We talked about recruitment and retention of staff.
So that could be one, right? Well, let's go back to student achievement, right? Is that what he said? Student achievement, student achievement. Do you all agree that that's one area that needs to be a major goal area? Yes? So student achievement and then what was the second one was retention?
Recruitment.
Recruitment. So have a conversation about that. Because who's going to support student achievement? Who's going to provide?
I'm sorry, can I stop for a second?
Sure.
I, I feel like we're all a little bit burnt out this morning. Yeah, it could be a mystery in the room, but. I feel like if we're gonna create the goals for this whole school year in the next thirty minutes and a lot of us. Are feeling a little bit off about the conversation of our operations, the operational decisions and then. Like. Like some of us are like shutting down, right? Like I, I just don't feel comfortable in this position right now because like I also. Wanted to dig deeper into some of these goals. Like I feel like we can't do it and we can't do it in, in twenty minutes. Um, so I, I don't know how you guys feel, but I just feel like this conversation, I'm upset on the app because I think. For me, it has to go stuff, right? Like I just. I think we need to like continue this conversation on tomorrow or like figure out a way for us to. Because like. I will not have this conversation without talking about. The creation of the elementary program, incoming program. That is like my number one goal this year. And I don't think that in the next twenty minutes we can do that. I don't know. I want to put it on the table. I could be wrong. Maybe I'm reading the room wrong, but I just. I don't know. I feel like. If it's not.
So.
We don't have the ability to do that.
I can bring you back to what you read. About. Nine thousand and ninety-two hundred. Specifically ninety-two hundred board dialogue. It's not any board member individually. Focusing on one agenda item, right? It's not what each of you want to see because that is. What you feel your area need. Is coming together and deciding what you feel is needed is something that we can all agree on. Right? So.
I give that for me, I am, um. I am shut again. Because we are creating. Change and change is hard. Definitely. Change is hard. So I think for me. We, we all want our superintendent in our district to be successful. And that means we all have to recalibrate, learn, unlearn and relearn. And that's. That's not only gonna be difficult and a shock to us as individuals, but a shock to the system, right? So I don't wanna do a disservice by. Creating goals. And I know I need to build a bridge and get over it, right? And I know that I've talked big game without feelings and all of that stuff. But because this is so important, hey. Wait. I want you to win so we can win, right? And I really do buy into the we are one, right? I. I don't wanna not sit here and champion anti-racism because I'm stuck in my feelings. Right? About understanding that my role as a board member, I've been doing it long for five years, long in quotes. Right? Not going to where the bylaws have said. That's a hit on who I am as a person. So it's going to take me some time to adjust to that. It's a hit on who I am as I communicate to cabinet, right? Honestly, I've been more, I've been more comfortable being a quote-unquote cabinet member than a board member for the last five years. Cause our board was so highly unfunctional or dysfunctional. So I found friendships and space of understanding and learning and all of those things from cabinet members. Versus board members. And now that's a shift because I've developed trust in cabinet to tell me the truth. I've developed trust in. Micromanaging gently, right? I've developed these skills that are no longer needed, necessary. Or by the book, like they're just not there. That's not what I'm supposed to be doing and that's a hit to me. And it's something that's going to take. Time because it feels like a breakup. And because it feels like a breakup in that now I'm going to cheat on the people that I've known for five years with strangers. And that's gonna take some time for me to adjust and to do my job. My job, my ninety-two hundred job to do my job well. So I even now. In a thirty minutes, I'm gonna rush to Pinot to put tablecloths down because I'm an overdoer. And I'm an over stretcher and I want so bad for us all to win. But it's not like they're not gonna do it. They are gonna do it because they've done it four other times and four other things. But because I'm so gotta be in it to feel like I'm needed. All of this stuff that we're going through, it's gonna take time for me to adjust to who I am in this role. So for me to then turn around and want to fight. And collaborate and to make sure that we're all being heard in an agreement about goals. I just personally can't do it. I'm all discombobulated. I don't even know where I am at this point or who I am. At this point, I don't wanna break a rule by going to volunteer at something, but volunteering is all I know. Right? That's all. I mean, but you know, you know what I mean, but that's all I know how to do. Like service is all I know how to do. And I don't wanna cross no boundary or do something wrong because also following the rules is all I know how to do. So I'm trying to find out. Who I am and I can't do that and set good direction in this moment. Because, you know.
It's a lot.
Now I feel like a big old man.
It's a lot. All of you have got, have done a lot of. Sharing and feeling and this is new for all of you. Look around the room at all the work you have done. This is not done in one session. You have done a lot. If you remember. Part of the original agenda I had did not have goals, but you were also determined. Those of you I spoke with on the phone, that you wanted to make sure you talked about goal. Okay? These conversations cannot be rushed. Because we are also human. And we feel before we think. So you have to work through those feelings. Even someone who says, I'm not. You know, I, I, I don't feel and I'm not into feeling. We are human. So my suggestion is. Know what the cluster of goal areas are. But these are conversations you need to continue, right? Those big goals I talked about, big goal areas. Are already there. She's already, your superintendent is, is already working. That's how you're moving your district forward. So you're not starting from scratch. Okay? But you at the board also need goal setting time for you to decide because as I'm hearing. You agreed, yet there's still some questions about the agreements. So you need more time. That's, that's the bottom line. And there is no magic wand to say, yeah, one session, you're all going to move forward and end war. A- as a unified team, but we still need time to come together. And talk and agree and feel your feeling. I'm happy that you feel comfortable. It means for you to say, hey, you know, I, I've had enough. I can't focus anymore. I respect that. Jamila, for you to, to, to be vulnerable. And to show your feelings when you have been fighting all day to not put. Focus on feelings. That's a breakthrough. I mean. I feel like you got a lot done here today. But remember, these conversations take time. They're not done over one session or just one. You know, just a few conversations. And I know you're all tired and nothing like they're going to make sense right now. My suggestion is you have to continue these, with or without the facilitators, you need to continue.
One of the, one of the. This has been an amazing conversation. And I did not think that we would get to this point. And I know. That we're not gonna get to this point and everyone is, it's, you know. Rainbow, not gonna do that because it is a shame to me. I also know I have some anxiety angst around making sure that my goals are objectives are in place. That I know I've worked towards. Otherwise, we're just gonna be just doing stuff. We're just hanging out. And I don't, I, it needs to be a little more structured than that. I'm also mindful. That's where my angst is coming from right now. I can't start. This work. In the middle of October. And be able to really actually accomplish something. And be successful. By January and. Yeah. I have been working on it. It's some draft notes. And hearing this conversation, I can continue to do that. I know that the. The board will be in closed session or actually open session talking about. Um, a separate many of board members who. um, and stuff for many of board members who are gonna work on the goals and objectives, and I'm working with you guys on that, with me. So I've got a draft of something that we can kind of move through. I've heard and you guys have communicated things that are important to you as a board. Um, and those things actually are included in some of the drafts and things that I'm looking at in terms of, if I can throw this out here. And it'll come out again, because I know that we're not at the great space to hear it all, but I just wanna make sure that we're we're taking, we're still taking steps forward. For goal one and another, recruitment and retention staff, this is not set in stone, and this is not set in any particular order, it's not. Um, goal two, and that's really looking at grow on our own. Uh, I, national board, so there's some some key frameworks I'd like to. And do you and I work with our new teachers this year, and that's a good, it's not set in stone, so if you're not writing a pencil, I don't know, it'll happen, we have to scribble it up and throw it away. Um, physical solvency is another area of focus. Um, I'm looking at positive certification, get looked up for a second, like, yeah, good luck. But what's realistic around, around our, I I want realistic goals as well. Um, instructional leadership, and so looking at data, monitoring our data. Um, we've got math adoption this year, we've got reading screeners this year, focus around our English learners, which includes DLI and newcomers and bell tells. And the development of our ARs, it's big to ARs around our cell phone policy, our antispoke policy. So those are some, some bigger bodies of work that I'm trying to wrap my head around, what does that look like? Um, community engagement, and so, um, communication, building trust, visibility, town halls, that work. Um, and then finally belonging and inclusion, and so that's where our anti-racist work comes in and is connected to building trust and transparency in our family engagement. Including parents and the community with us. That's where my mind is going right now, does this sound appropriate and I'm missing something? In terms of the work, this stuff, we're gonna have to contain this, yeah, this is gonna just keep going. Yeah.
Forget I'm gonna answer, where is the new new commerce school data at?
When we talked about, uh, instructional. Instructional leadership, is what are we doing around DLI, what are we doing for to support our newcomers? You know, tell us a little bit more about that. I can't, I don't know, I I have, we have not, I haven't had a conversation about your vision or. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know how much it costs, I don't know what we're, what scope we're talking about. I've just met with some students in ten weeks, and I had a student pull me aside and had a whole conversation about her experience in bringing a cover program. So let's talk about that, but I don't, we haven't had those conversations, so I don't know.
I just wanna make sure it is supportive. Yes, I do think it's important, but maybe to majority of the board, we placed as a goal in years past, and that could to this, it has some content, right? So I know we're starting new, right, and I wanna be thoughtful of that, but you're new, the staff is not, and they know it's been incredibly stressful here, so.
We won't start a school, but I know that there are places that are interested in that. So we can lay, I can, I can be responsible to lay the foundation, that's if these goals, we're held accountable for these goals. I can only do what I know I can do.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I'm so pushy, I just don't even know, it's a apology, just because I do feel a bit frustration as a boy, right? And, uh, I think that, uh, I I wanna be really respectful now, approaching this with you, because I know that I am being really pushy and personal, but I just, I just feel such urgency about it, right? And there's a reason, um, because I know that in the middle, this whole problem of all staffing issues, right? This has been they left on side, because there's always an excuse. And I think that I've gotten to a place, but like, I don't feel I can take those excuses, I just, why this is, can't happen, right? Um, and unfortunately, you're encouraging that, right? Uh, including my feelings about the whole situation, right? And I think others as well, uh, things, but I want you to know, it's not just me. I'm, I think I'm being the spokesperson, but I think some people feel really similar that have advocated for this for three years.
And and I, and I feel very optimistic like about this discussion, which was, you know, with minor league contenders. I think we have ways of doing that, I think we have ways of working within the strategic plan, within our expectations, within superintendent, um, evaluations of, you know, I don't, I don't see it as. I see, I see ways to, uh, to make a work party. And yes, I do, I think this is super important, super important.
I don't know. If not, this is not, it's gonna be a pushback. I need to be able to do my job. And unless we're all, we're all superintendent, I need to be able to do my job. And I, I need to support that. Um, I understand the consideration, okay? So we can definitely work towards making sure we're checking, knowing whether it is a decision provided, but we talk, and I'm always a little bit kind of hearing and figuring that out, but I'm, I need to reorder things to happen, I need to build, that I need to make that, to do this work. And I need the support from the board to do that. Yes, you know, that's all I'm doing, my cabinet, or our officer attendants, right?
And there's some trust, and then it's, it all comes back to trust, right? Um, unfortunately, you inherited the mistrust, I'm not saying from this superintendent stuff itself, but like the cabinet, right? So, I, my hope is just that you move forward with your own opinions, your own say, sees, and not with others or relationships. I don't have a say in that, I mean, but, um, that's just my concern, right? Again, I'm open for it, there's probably gonna be a pushback, uh, or not getting any pushback, or I can just sit there quiet like those of you do, or speak up like I'm doing now, so it's just.
So I think that we, you're inheriting a board that has had a management in the past, right? So for us to just be like, right completely, it's not gonna happen over time, right? So I think that like, it's gonna take a little bit of coaching from you, I I don't wanna speak very loud for me, right? To be like, I got this, right? Like, you want to make the newcomer school happen, let me create the staffing changes, the locations changes, right? Like, the cuts I need to have in order to make it, you gotta trust me that that's what's best. Like, I think that's what I hear you say, thanks, right, like, to make this schools happen. I think it's gonna take a little bit of time to get to that point, right? Like, I think we chose good because the foundation's there, now we just gotta build together the next piece, right? Of like, for us to completely let go, it's gonna take some, some time to see that, right? See the work that happens and and then, and then just completely disconnect, right? Uh, because I think it's gonna. Yeah.
It's, that's not, I'm not, I'm here to do that, I'm asking to allow me to build the team that I need and the work that I need. So that. We're at three thirty, we're in the corner of our heads up.
So this will take time, but it it also takes your individual attention and mindfulness to create the kind of culture that we all want. Just want to make sure that that, uh, that you're mindful of that, but you want to see also to look at what you need, how you need to continue to. Want to.
Thanks, thank you everybody for the, it was a very good discussion and group discussion, thank you for your openness. Um, and next meeting is tomorrow, it's the tenth, twenty twenty-five. Five o'clock is closed, six thirty is open, there's a special meeting, because a couple of items were inadvertently left off the agenda, followed by the waiting room meeting, I don't exactly know personally how to do that, but we'll figure it out by tomorrow. Um, and we're adjourned, see everybody.
How are we gonna follow up with the goals, because that's like, there's urgency of us, I know, right? So when are we gonna see them back?
Yes, um.
I didn't want you to say adjourn before, sorry, interrupt.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, let me, I I have a hard stop.
Oh, yeah.
Let me figure that out within the next day or two, and we'll get that right out, but I am, I I agree. And we're adjourned to ask, between now and you got another minute if you want to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.